...meeting together for the February 11th, Plaster County Planning Commission. And so, at this point, could we have Jeffrey lead us in the... ...Fledgled Allegiance? Okay, thank you. Let me see, we'll do a roll call of the Commissioners.
Mr. Denio.
Here.
Mr. Seveson.
Here.
Mr. Moss.
Here.
Mr. Gray.
Here.
Mr. Crabbe.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Brenton, I was absent.
Okay, let me see, we'll move on to the report from the Planning Director.
Time extensions to entitlements such as conditional use permits and variances that are approved in conjunction with a tentative subdivision map or tentative parcel map. As you may be aware, the Governor has issued automatic extensions for subdivision maps because of the current economy. And we wanted to be sure that any other entitlement that was also approved with the subdivision map would also be approved. So, the Board adopted that ordinance on Tuesday. The appeal of the Saint Joseph Morello Church was supposed to be heard, however, one of the Board members was absent. And both the appellant and the applicant wanted a full panel of Board members present, so that was continued to the March 2nd agenda. On the upcoming February 23rd Board meeting, the appeal of the Caldwell rezone general plan amendment will be heard. And at your February 25th Planning Commission meeting, you will be taking public comments on the Bohemia Retail Draft EIR. And that's a commercial site just off Highway 49 in Luther here in Auburn. That concludes staff's comments.
Okay, any questions from the Commissioners? Okay, hearing none, then this is an opportunity for the public to comment on any item that's not on today's agenda. So, if you could, anybody that would like to make a comment before the Commission step forward at this time? Okay, seeing none. We'll wait for a couple minutes and move forward to our 10:05 agenda item.
Mr. Chair, it would be appropriate, given the staff presentation, the key is that you not take action before 10:05.
Okay.
And so, if it's the Commission's desire, you could commence this public hearing.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and commence the public hearing then. And so, could we have Stacy, would you like to step forward and give us your presentation? And this is Gondola North Homesite Project up in the Sugar Bowl area?
Correct. Good morning, Vice Chair Johnson, fellow Planning Commissioners. As just mentioned, the project before you on the first item on your agenda is the Gondola North Homesite Project. The project is located within the Sugar Bowl Ski Resort, which is approximately three and a half miles southeast of Interstate 80 and has access from Donner Pass Road. The current zoning is forestry and open space, and the general plan designation is resort and recreation. The Sugar Bowl Ski Resort was established in 1939, and approximately 700 acres of land is comprised of the Sugar Bowl Ski Area, together with also the Village Core. And approximately 80 acres of that 700 acres is of the Village Core. The Village Core includes those ski lodges, residential units, including single-family and multifamily, together with the operations for the ski resort, so offices and industrial-type uses. This picture is taken from the existing parking structure that is utilized by the Sugar Bowl Ski Resort, together with all the residences who live in the development area of Sugar Bowl. And it's important to note that the Sugar Bowl is very unique in that in the winter, the community, the residential area becomes a snowbound village. There's no winter access. So, there's a gondola, which, okay. This area right in here, which runs all the way up to the left side of the picture, is where the gondola runs, and that provides access in the wintertime, or you may ski in and out. Over the past 15 years, many subdivisions have been approved, either recommended of approval by the Planning Commission to the Board of Supervisors, or approved by yourselves. And some of these subdivisions have included rezonings and variances. The project proposal consists of four components. The rezoning, the vesting tentative... Oh, sorry. The vesting... There's my map. The vesting tentative subdivision map, a conditional use permit, and a variance. And I will discuss these individually throughout this presentation. I'll begin with the rezoning, and the applicants are here requesting a rezone from forestry and open space to single-family residential. The Planning Commission staff is asking that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors on the rezone. The general plan designation, as I mentioned before, was resort and recreation, and that will remain consistent if the rezone is approved to single-family residence. The... And this is... I shoot back up. This is the existing project site area, and this is the general plan map, and then this is the zoning map. And the existing zoning, as I mentioned, is forestry and open space, and the proposed zoning is single-family residential with a combining minimum building size of 8,000 square feet. Specifically, the applicants are proposing to rezon 6.1 acres of forestry and approximately 4.07 acres of open space to single-family residential with that combining district of a minimum building size of 8,000 square feet. As a result, the applicants are proposing to rezon this area in compensation for the open space area that's to be rezoned. This parcel is approximately 23 acres in total, and 4.1 acres of it will be rezoned from residential forest development reserve to open space. This map, which I actually have placed in front of you, recognizing that the slide is maybe a little bit difficult to read, this just demonstrates all of the existing subdivisions that are within the Sugar Bowl Development Area. And there's also a chart in your staff report, which explains all of the open space rezonings that have occurred throughout the subdivisions of Sugar Bowl. I won't go into too great detail, as, like I said, it is contained in your staff report. However, of the past subdivisions, approximately 8.5 acres has been rezoned from open space to single-family residential. If the project is approved, that number would increase to approximately 12.5 acres of open space rezoned to single-family residential. However, over the years, out of all these subdivisions have been created, together with this project, 82 acres of open space will have been created. So, the 82 acres includes that 4.1 acre parcel that they're proposing to provide as compensation for the 4.07 acres that they're proposing to rezon. So, in summary, the project will not decrease the amount of open space within the Sugar Bowl Development, resulting in a no net loss of open space. The other request that the applicants are asking is for a vesting tentative map to subdivide 10.5 acres into 25 single-family residential lots. There's also a proposed parcel A, which is a transportation parcel, and I will go into further detail about that parcel later on in the presentation. And also, they are requesting that this parcel, parcel B, and parcel C be retained as open space, as those are existing sensitive areas. Wetlands are within those areas, habitat, stream, et cetera. So, those areas will remain as open space parcels. They remain... Also, staff has recommended, as a condition of approval, open space preservation easements be placed over those two parcels to ensure that they are protected and they're not disturbed during any construction. There are two tributaries that discharge into the South Yuba River. They are on the north and west side of the project. Staff has determined that, as a result of the construction, those will not be disturbed to a significant level. And grading, as a result of this project, the initial grading will be for the continuation of the roads, together with infrastructure. The grading is approximately 3.5 acres of the site. The applicants... Or, I should say, of the 65-acre site. However, there's a balance of 300 cubic yards that will be moved from the site and filled. Staff has concluded, based upon a geotechnical report, that there would be no significant impacts associated with the grading, understanding that each individual lot will come in for its own building permit, and grading will be reviewed at that time. With regards to visual impacts, there's minimal impacts, as you can see today. There's a little, like, maybe road that's right in there. This is where the existing gondola building is and where the existing gondola line is. There are residences that actually exist today in here. So, therefore, staff has determined that the visual impacts will be limited in that the tree cover, together with the distance from Donner Pass Road to this area... I zoomed in on this picture so you could actually see some of the little areas, and so I'm quite a bit aways. Again, I'm standing on that parking structure. And also, to further ensure that there are no visual impacts with the construction of this area, staff has recommended a condition of approval that a lighting plan be submitted prior to any construction to ensure that the lighting impacts are consistent... Or, excuse me, that the lighting is consistent with the county standards. And furthermore, the Development Review Committee conducted an initial study and determined that a mitigated negative declaration was completed, and that the impacts of this project were minimal, and that all impacts that were identified were mitigated to a less than significant level. As mentioned, a conditional use permit is also part of this project. The conditional use permit is required because of these ski lift facilities and operations. That's just the requirement of the code. And staff has determined that the ski lift facilities are compatible in the area and surrounding character, and that the ski lifts will provide access for the residences to the main development area to get onto the main ski lifts. So, staff determined that there are no land use conflicts with the conditional use permit for those ski lift facilities. Additionally, the applicants are requesting a variance to the maximum residential building height for the single-family residential units to be constructed. The maximum allowed for a single-family residence is 30 feet on slopes, less than 20,000 square feet. On lots that are 23,000 square feet and larger would allow for a maximum of 36 feet. The project is proposing 8,000 square feet lots. However, it's been demonstrated by the past of variances that have been approved, and by the construction that exists out there today, that if this variance is granted, we would not be creating an inconsistency with the surrounding or character of the existing development area. Also, it's important to note that the amount of snow that can accumulate within this area could present a hardship that's not otherwise experienced by all persons within the county, further warranting the recommendation of approval for the variance. Therefore, in conclusion, the Development Review Committee is recommending that the Planning Commission take the following actions on the Gondola North Homesite Project. We recommend that you adopt the mitigated negative declaration, recommend to the Board of Supervisors approval of the rezoning, as discussed in my presentation, approve the vesting tentative map to subdivide 11.5 acres into 25 residential lots, and also recognize parcel A for a transportation corridor parcel, and the two additional lots, B and C, for open space preservation. Also, approve the conditional use permit for the relocation... Or, for the ski lift facilities, and approve the variance to allow for a maximum height of 36 feet for the future residential buildings. And that concludes my project presentation, so I'm available if you have any questions.
Okay, any questions from the Commissioners?
Is there any provision for any review of tree removal when the individual structures are built?
Individual residential sites, we do not have a tree ordinance for each individual site, but it was determined that there are abundance of trees out here, and there would be no impacts.
And could you show me again exactly where the ski lift runs, the new proposed one?
Okay. I'm sorry, it's not a ski lift. It's actually a rope tow, and then a gondola, which is actually... This is the gondola chairlift terminal, and it will lead down to here. And the applicants can go into more of the specifics of how that all operates, if you'd like, to get it more accurate.
Okay, Stacy, I might have a couple questions here. These may be just kind of educational for me. At any rate, I guess when we approve this, and you were just talking about the tree ordinance, the county's tree ordinance, and so when we approve the tentative map, conditional use permit, then that's what puts it in that category of not being under the ordinance? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, no, we reviewed it as the subdivision.
Okay.
And so, in the environmental document, there is a section on the potential tree impacts. I can actually get those specific numbers, but it was such a small percentage of tree removal that it was not significant. That was proposed to be removed just for the roads. That's all the trees that are going to be removed at this time, when they go in to do the road and infrastructure. And then, each individual single-family residence, if the rezone is approved, then those residential units will be reviewed at that time of the building permit. But there is no tree ordinance for single-family residences, so...
Okay, so, yeah.
Yeah.
If something goes out in the forest and has a three-acre parcel, then they have to meet the tree ordinance, but in this case, they won't have to meet it.
Right, if... When they turn over to single-family residential zoning.
Okay. And then, maybe to carry further on, there's reference to a timber harvest permit in condition 25, which has to do with roads. And so, I'm presuming, in that case, the interplay between the state's timber harvest permit rules and the county construction, I guess that's... Talking about... Number 25 just talks about roads. It doesn't say anything about trees. But in number 41, it's talking about a timber harvest permit in place consistent with condition number 25. So, I guess I'm trying to establish an nexus there, which I think I understand. Maybe you can clarify it for me.
Okay, maybe I'm not understanding. You want clarification between... You said condition number 41?
Yeah, condition number 41 makes reference to a tree harvest permit in place, consistent with condition 25. And when I read 25, it's talking about roadway improvements and adequate turnaround improvements. And so, I'm just trying to clarify what the nexus is between those two conditions.
My condition 41 is to reconstruction...
On 41, it's actually on page 27.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I don't know if that's a misrepresentation of referral to condition 25. As stated in condition 41, a timber harvest plan will be required, and we will assure conformance with both county and state standards for that. I'll take a look through other conditions to see if it should have been referenced to a different condition number.
Okay.
That is correct.
Okay. That clarifies it for me. And then, I guess, I'm presuming that on the individual lots, as they develop, then the individual owners will have to go through the timber harvest plan process at that time, and address the state's rules with trees.
Right, actually, the Sugar Bowl Development will go through that prior to the sale of the lots.
Oh, okay. Okay, one more question. Mickey, does that kind of get...
I have a comment on that last... Or, question on that last comment. So, that once, let's say, the zoning goes through, the rezon goes through, then the individual property owner, once he's bought the property, still has to go through the state timber?
No.
No. So, basically, just so I clarify, once they've sold the lot, the guy can come in and clearcut it? According to the county, the county's got nothing to say about it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Also, I'm looking under... One of the things that, of course, you know, being adjacent to the South Yuba River, which is in the headwaters area, water quality is kind of an important issue, is, you know, this is the headwaters, a lot of drinking water. So, under the mitigation measures for water quality, and this would be in, let me see, hydrology and water quality, number five, I think, it's mitigated. But I wondered if you could go into a little bit more detail. Apparently, a lot of the water quality issues are going to be dealt with subsequent to, you know, our approval today, but maybe you could go a little bit of detail to fill us in on how the water quality will be handled in this process?
Well, the applicants will be required to adhere to all of the mitigation measures and the conditions of the reports that were conducted, like the drainage report. So, I guess to primary... The initial construction of this site will only, like I said, will only involve the construction, the extension of Mulesir Drive, together with the infrastructure. So, BMP, you know, best management practices will be installed, erosion control measures, et cetera. And then, so, I guess this... Today, the vesting tentative map is like a paper exercise that would record this map that would allow for these individual lots to be sold. And then, as those individual lots come in for construction, then the Development Review Committee would review the encroachment, and making sure that the drainage still flows, you know, the culvert is sized enough to go over the driveway, and, you know, just to make sure there's no impacts to, like, maintaining the 100-year floodplain, which is along the side. Those will all be reviewed individually when a single-family residence comes in. They will also be reviewed through the improvement plans for all of the onsite infrastructure and road construction. So, I hope... Does that answer...
Well, kind of what I was fishing maybe a little bit for is, you know, after the subdivision's in place, and then, you know, vehicles on roads and stuff, oil, and various other hazardous things just are inherent in the drainage that would be coming from this subdivision.
Okay. I'll let...
Hi, Sarah Gilmore, Engineering Surveying, and maybe I can expand on that a little bit. Stacy's absolutely right that there's all sorts of ordinances and state law that requires VMPs, and you're familiar with the kind of erosion control measures that would be required when they come through with the roads. In addition, because we're doing improvement plans, we're also requiring a very in-depth and detailed drainage study that looks both at the floodplains and the water levels, as well as the water quality issues. Some of the preliminary identified VMPs would be things like rock outfall spreaders, specific revegetation for the area, and infiltration trenches along the roads. And those are all water quality issues. We also take a good look at what would be likely to come off of an individual residential lot. Obviously, at the time of the map and the improvement plans, we won't know everything that's going in, but we can anticipate and design for a reasonable level of runoff from each lot as a part of the improvement plans.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Conditions 9 and 10 speak to that as well. It gets the state involved in a discharge permit and describes some of the things that have to be done. The number 10 says prepare, submit a project improvement plans, a drainage report, in conformance with the requirements of Section 5 of Land Development, and so on. I think most of that... And then, the state has to issue a permit for the project as well.
Okay.
And so, they'll review it from the standpoint of water quality, as you were concerned about.
Okay. Yeah, that does, that does. Well, both of you helped me. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. Okay, would the project proponent like to step up to the microphone?
Mr. Chairman, and members of the Commission, my name is Brad Sherhall. I'm with TLA Engineering and Planning here down in Roseville, today here representing Sugar Bowl. We are the civil engineer and land use planner for Sugar Bowl, and proud to be so. Stacy, thank you very much for your assistance this morning. It was an excellent, comprehensive presentation. Makes our job a little easier, frankly, and I do appreciate that very much. As she mentioned, we're here requesting your approval, actually, first recommendation for the rezon that she mentioned. Second, approval of the vesting tentative map for the 25-lot, single-family subdivision. The lot sizes range anywhere from 9,600 square feet all the way up to almost 18,000 square feet. She mentioned the sensitivity of our design towards the wetland preservation. We are also sensitive to the South Yuba River here. The general plan suggests a buffer of approximately 100 feet from that river, and we've designed according to that recommendation, so... We're here also asking for the variance that Stacy mentioned. As you know, this... The subdivision is intended to be a snowbound subdivision. There is no rubber tire access during the wintertime. We probably get eight to six... Six to eight feet of snow out there, and essentially, half a house might be buried under snow, so we ask for about six extra feet to help us with that problem. As she mentioned, we have the conditional use permit issue. We currently... See if I can make this thing work here. Currently, the gondola... Not the gondola, I'm sorry. The lift that's out here ends at about this location. We're going to move that to approximately up here, and that facilitates us putting a handle-toe facility in here to help transport, basically, people on skis to the rest of the resort area from the housing developments in here. The intent of this development, really, is a... It's really to promote the sustainability of Sugar Bowl as a community, accounting a state recreation and entertainment resource. Any value that comes from this really goes back into the Sugar Bowl area. As my client stated yesterday, we don't pay dividends to anybody. The money goes right back into this, into this great resource. Sugar Bowl itself is unique among some of the ski resort neighbors in that it does have this snowbound village. You're not going to find this anywhere else. They go to extra effort to make this work. They go to effort to ensure that there's fire protection. They go to effort to make sure that trash is collected and removed. That extra effort brings with it the benefit of at least being able to have a snowbound village out here. In a sentence, Sugar Bowl is really about the skiing, the open air, and the open space that's up here. And that's really what they promote and what they market here. That really concludes my comments regarding the development. I do have a few issues, so to speak, with some conditions of approval, and I spoke with county council earlier about these. There's a few conditions of approval, and I don't think we're going to ask that we have the language changed, but simply put into the record our concerns. And county council and I have agreed that I don't believe it'll be a problem in the future. Because this is a vesting tentative map, it conveys certain development rights into the future. Specifically, on condition 46, 47, and 96, and I won't ask you to go and look at them necessarily, but those conditions say that fees that we would pay in the future would be based on the fee program in effect at the time that the application is deemed complete. I wanted to put in the record that what this really means is that the application for the vesting tentative map, not necessarily a final map application or something else into the future, it's the application for the vesting tentative map. This doesn't mean that the fee program, or that the fee that's in place, $100, for instance, today, is what we're paying into the future. Those fee programs actually have multipliers for cost of living increases, and because those are in place, even if we came in with a final map 10 years from now, we'd be paying those are in place, even if we came in with a final map 10 years from now, we'd be paying the fee today plus that multiplier. This really simply protects us from, it gives us a development right that says that if sometime between today and 10 years from now, there's a new fee program that's in place, we're not subject to that. We're only subject to what is in place today. We did have, there's a single word in condition number three that, for this development and a lot of developments that we work on, is problematic. This is a very long condition. But essentially, Patrick, do you have that? It goes down pretty far into this condition. It's probably three-quarters of the way down. It says that the design site review process and/or DRC review is required as a condition of approval for the project. Said review process shall be completed prior to submittal of improvement plans. The word "submittal" here is problematic for us. Every time we come in, well, nearly every time we come in with a project, we probably spend about a day dealing with this one-word "submittal." It would be much easier for us to deal with if the word was "approval." What happens is, we might see that somebody, we'll see the engineering technician at the counter, and he'll require us to take all our plans and go to the DRC and ask them to approve it before we bring in our improvement plans. The way this really works nuts and bolts is that that DRC approval occurs at the same time that the improvement plan review occurs. But for us to go back and get approval, to get staff to say, oh, we can do that at the same time, it takes us about a day, probably around $1,000. So, I just want to bring that up to you. We'll be subject to that on this same project, on this project, because we do have a DRC approval that has to occur if we do lighting for this project, if we do a monument sign, which I don't think we're going to do. But because we have to go back and get that approval before we submit our improvement plans, it becomes quite problematic for us. Other than that, we don't really have much else to mention. I think Stacy did a great job of indicating the fact that, over the years, Sugar Bowl developments have actually resulted in an increase, an increase of open space zoning. Over 82 acres is quite substantial. The whole development area is about 1,900 acres, and that includes lands that Sugar Bowl owns, lands owned by other people who own houses out here today, and also lands that are permitted by the U.S. Forest Service to Sugar Bowl to operate. It's quite something to see, especially when you put it on paper and look at the expanse of everything. That concludes my comments, and we're certainly available for questions. I do have our civil engineer, Patrick Longton, here today. Chris Parker from Sugar Bowl Corporation is also here, happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah, let's go back to the ski lift or proposed.
Yes.
Could you explain that a little bit more? I'm not quite picturing exactly where it's at, and how the rope tow for access strikes before.
Yeah.
Got it done a different map?
Yeah, we'll see what we have here. Let's see if we've got something different. Okay. I think, other way? Thank you, Stacy. I was thinking, probably the marketing exhibit, is probably our best bet, perhaps. This map, this is a marketing exhibit that we produce for Sugar Bowl, and it's upside down from what you would normally see, and that north is down here. This is Donner Pass Road up here. This is where you come in. This is the big parking facility, the garage down here. As you drive past here, this is the Judah area parking, and the lodge that was built in the last decade is here. When you ride the gondola, you get on the gondola here at the garage, and you ride up into the village here. They have a secondary access that is this chairlift facility. It's not necessary, it's not for ski lift, it's not a ski lift, per se. It's a way to, a secondary way to ride in to the village. On rare occasion, the gondola facility is not functional, and this becomes a secondary way to get into the village, per se. It has a certain distance today, and it ends at about, right around here, which is where the proposed rope handle, or the handle-toe facility would be. We simply want to shorten it from here to here to end around, I think it was approximately this location here. And the new facility is a handle-toe, which is a surface tow. So, people would grab the handle, they'd be on skis, and they would ride from the subdivision all the way in here to this facility, rather than have to carry their ski equipment and stuff like that. So, did that help?
Yeah, I think that gives me an idea of what you're trying to accomplish.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Second question would be concerning tree removal per individual lot. Perhaps you could explain, does Sugar Bowl have any in-house rules concerning that kind of?
Yeah, you know, I wrote, while you were having the discussion with Stacy, I talked to Mr. Parker a little bit and wrote a few notes for myself. I did mean to bring that up. For our initial submittal, for the environmental review process, sheet number five, which you actually have, I think, in your full-size sheets there, sheet number five illustrates the approximate tree removal based on the road area and also based on approximate locations, if you will. I would call them conceptual building envelopes. It identifies an approximate number of trees that, based on those building envelopes and based on the rest of the improvements that we would do, that we think the trees would probably need to come out. I talked to Mr. Parker about this specifically because he deals with this stuff, you know, on every one of the projects they do up here. Yes, they do get a harvest permit, and I asked him, when you go in to remove trees for the road specifically, you know, what are we going to do? Well, the trees that are identified basically for that road will be removed. At the same time, they will do some silvicultural clearing, essentially removing dead and dying trees, trees that might be problematic, so that they're somewhat efficient in their operation out there. When individual lots are sold, and somebody decides that they're, well, we're going to move our building envelope a little bit, the estimate of tree removal might change a little bit. But generally speaking, what you see there for the environmental review is going to be relatively accurate as far as numbers go. I think it sounds like from Stacy's commentary and even from Sarah's commentary, that when building permits are pulled, those building permits are going to indicate also the number of trees that are removed or proposed to be removed for those individual lots. Also recognize that this development is going to be in an HOA, of which Sugar Bowl Corporation itself is a major part of this. Their interest is not to see every single tree removed. As an HOA, they'll have an architectural review committee, and they'll have some say-ins as to exactly what trees are going to be removed, and, you know, I don't think there's going to be a situation where somebody's going to come in and clear-cut a lot. It's just not going to happen.
Because Sugar Bowl would have some say over.
I believe Sugar Bowl is going to have a say in that. Yes, sir.
Could you show me again the open spaces being set aside?
Yeah, let's see here. That's probably, that's going to be number one, isn't it, the very front one? Yeah, so I'll come back this way. Actually, this is a pretty good one right here. The, Stacy mentioned.
Where's the gondola?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure. The gondola, the gondola, we should have had a label on here a little bit better. The gondola ends right now about here. Actually, the gondola's going to continue to end there, because the shack is up just, I think this is actually the shack up here. The chairlift that we talked about will end approximately at this location. This area here is the area that is currently zoned open space.
You know, I'm still not following this map.
Okay. It is reversed, and I apologize for that, the marketing exhibit being, so, let's come back here. The gondola, the gondola and the garage are up this direction. Actually, it's up here at the road, and it runs down through here like this, and ends here, terminates in the village. And that rope tow I talked about, the handle tow, is going to start approximately here and run down through here like this. This piece of property is the area that is currently open space that we're asking to rezone.
And what's that little blue mark in the middle? Is that a wetland?
This is a wetland area, yes. We decided, hey, we're, you know, we're not going to do any kind of development in this area. Let's preserve that as its own parcel. Similarly, we have one of those down in here, too, this green space here. We're going to preserve those as their own parcel. They're conditioned to actually have an open space easement on them also. That easement's certainly going to protect them forever. It's going to keep us, keep anyone from doing anything in there. Let's come back to the open space issue. So, this area here, approximately 4.07 acres, replacement, open space, it's going to be down in here, which serves a couple of different purposes. Both of, some of them are certainly right along the lines of what the general plan sees open space for. X is a buffer for development that is existing, preserves the trees and materials that are in here. Those are two of the biggest ones. It also is contiguous to other open space directly right here.
And above it? That?
Above it.
Close to the color? Yeah, that was.
This gray area is residential forest design review or development review. It is zoned for residential uses. The DR, the development, I think it's development review or design review, it requires that if you were to go in there and develop there, you'd have to have a specific plan. It's very, it's a combining district that appears almost anywhere in the county, it seems, so.
That answers most of my questions.
Okay.
If I could just carry on just a little bit more.
Sure.
In terms of, now, part of the parcel is rezoning open space, and the other part is rezoning forest?
That's correct.
Okay, so, I guess, and one of my questions is, is in terms of land use and the forestry zoning, what does Sugar Bowl use that forestry zoning for? Is it just kind of another type of open space, or how's that used?
Essentially, I would almost say it's a placeholder, doesn't necessarily have any use right now. So, they don't, they don't, it almost serves as open space the way it looks.
It's not used as forestry.
But it's not used as forest right now, no.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah, well, we may have you come back if there's questions from the public. Okay, at this time, we'll open up the discussion to anybody in the audience that would like to make comments on this project. Okay, seeing none, then we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, it's been many years of, a little bit every year of this project. It seems like it goes on into perpetuity, but actually, the, I guess it's kind of nice to have it developed a little at a time, so that the one that you have to assume is the community itself is involved in how this is being done, and there's not a lot of adversary enrollments going on all the time. And so, I guess for that, for that reason, and the variance, of course, we've heard for a lot of years that the reason for the variance every time, and there's always been a variance with every application, is because of the deep snow, that people tend to go in the second floor as their front door during the winter months, and they design their homes that way. And so, I think it's, it makes some sense if you understand, and I'm sure those that live in that area are more familiar with it. Would you care to offer a motion, or would you?
Well, actually, the height limit for some of the surrounding community is 35 feet already, so it's really not much of a variance, just bringing you back up to what the rest of them build at.
Yes, right.
Hey, it sounds like we're moving towards a motion.
Well, I don't want to, it's really your backyard. Would you care to make the motion, or would you rather have?
No, go right ahead. I'll second it, but I, all my questions have been answered in the idea, like you say, that it's been done slowly, somewhat sustainably, and there's probably as good a relationship between Sugar Bowl and the local community as I've ever seen since up there, so I'll be voting in favor.
All right, well, I'll start out following the staff's recommendation here, and that is that we adopt a mitigated native declaration as set forth in Attachment C, and a notice of determination of the sequel guidelines. I guess we have to take it in various steps. Is that the way you want it done? Okay, that's the first motion then, I guess.
Okay. Second. You're going to separate it out, you say?
Well, yeah. Do you want me to, would it be simpler to just do them all in one motion?
I think it would be simpler if you just did a single motion.
In addition to that, then, I'll recommend that we recommend to the board of supervisors approval of the rezoning for the Gondola North Honside subdivision project, including a rezoning of approximately 6.1 acres of forestry and approximately 4.7 acres of open space, and a rezoning of approximately 4.10 acres of RF/DR development reserve. Also, we approve the vesting tentative map for, to subdivide 11.28 acres of assessor's parcel 069320, 063 and 021, 0.21 acres of assessor's parcel numbers as listed in the agenda. I'm not going to read all that. And further approve the conditional use permit for the relocation of the village access chairlift and construction of the new rope tow. And five, approve the variance to exceed the 30-foot required residential building height limit to a maximum of 35 feet, along with the sequel findings and the conditional use findings, variance findings, and the rezoning findings, that we adopt those as part of the motion.
Okay, well, thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, I'll go for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Who's the old guy in the second row?
Okay, we're going to take just a couple minutes, Greg.
Hi, Terry.
Okay, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. And so, at this time, we're going to be hearing the proposal for a conditional use permit for the Livingston, Livingston Concrete Batch Plant. And so, from staff, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, thank you. I'm Leah Rososko from the Planning Department. Um, I can tell I haven't been here in quite some time, 'cause there are some new faces, so it's good to see you all. Um, I'm gonna go through the staff report in just a moment. As Mr. Johnson said, this is a request for approval of a conditional use permit for a batch plant, and the applicant is Livingston's Concrete. Before I get started, I just wanna go over a few bits of information, housekeeping, if you will. First of all, I wanted to be sure that the commission had received the correct version of the statement of findings prepared by the consultant for the project. I believe you were given a copy of this initially. We had sent out the incorrect copy, so I apologize for that. Your coffee, your copy should say revised February 2010, and I believe it was at your seat when you got here today, so.
And it was also emailed to us?
Yes, so we tried to cover all the bases, but I just wanna be sure.
Okay.
Okay, we're all set there. Additionally, we have received quite a bit of correspondence on the project in general, and then some quite recently, so I just wanted to run through a quick list of the correspondence that you should have a copy of, some of which you probably received just this morning. There's a letter dated February 3rd from Kenyon Yates, a law firm, that is acting on behalf of members of the community. Additionally, a letter from Kenyon Yates dated February 4th. These are all this year, by the way. Also, a letter dated February 4th from the Newcastle Community Association. A letter dated February 7th from Curtis Bailey, and it's this one that's on the public notice that was sent out, and he wrote a response at the bottom. Additionally, an email that we just received this morning, that I believe Kathy has provided to you, from Elizabeth Walters, looks like this. And then finally, a, a letter dated today from Abbott Kinderman, that is the law firm representing the applicants on this project. I'm thinking you have all these? Yes?
Yes, we do.
Okay, great. One thing I also did wanna state, this is sort of my disclaimer, I suppose, is that this report and this project deals with a lot of very technical information, so I'm going to go through it the best I can, but I wanted to let you know that we do have Development Review Committee staff here from the Environmental Health Department, Engineering and Surveying, Public Works, Air Pollution Control District. Additionally, we have the EIR consultants here with us today, North Fork Associates, and then, of course, the applicants and their representatives are here to answer questions about the specific operations of a batch plant where we may not be able to answer that, although we have learned a lot about it in the last several years that this has been going on, excuse me. Okay, moving on to my staff report. As I mentioned, we are here because the applicants are requesting approval of a conditional use permit, again, to allow for the construction and operation of a concrete batch plant on approximately five acres in OFER. If you should choose to approve the project, you will also be required to certify that final environmental impact report and adopt the statement of findings, and we've all clarified that we have the same copy, so. Just to let you know, we'll go into more detail about land use information, but the zoning on this property is C3 UP DC, which is heavy commercial, combining use permit, combining design review corridor. So, that simply means, if you look at this slide again, if the project is approved prior to acceptance of improvement plans, the applicants would have to submit a design site review application for approval. And that's where we would go over the more aesthetic qualities of the project landscaping, that type of thing. As I said, the zoning is C3 UP DC. The land use designation is within the OFER general plan area, and it is designated as commercial. Moving on to the location, this slide shows a very broad overview of the location of the project. So, this right here is Interstate 80. This smaller line is OFER Road, and here's the project in the center there. Moving on to a more detailed prescription, description of the project, it consists of the construction of the batch plant. Additionally, the project would include a 1,200-square-foot office building, 1,800-square-foot warehouse building, the batch plant, the actual equipment that is considered the batch plant, wash areas for the concrete trucks, parking for concrete trucks and employee vehicles, and then the frontage improvements that are required as part of the project and the landscaping. Here is a look at the site plan for the project. So, here's Interstate 80, here's OFER Road, here are the access points to the project. Over here would be the office, over here, the proposed warehouse, and then the batching and washdown areas back here. I just wanted to move on through the slides, show you a couple of aerials of the site. Here's the closer detail of the project site, so again, obviously Interstate 80, OFER Road, and the project site. This area, which I'll go into this a little bit more, is zoned commercial. There are a couple of existing homes here in the area. Those would be considered legally non-conforming, so they were constructed before the area was zoned commercial. Then, moving on to the next aerial, there was a concern by members of the community with the previous aerial, that it didn't show enough of the surrounding area. So, here's a wider view. This is the project area, Interstate 80, and then, much of the concerns we have received are from residents in this area on the other side of Interstate 80. So, I just wanna provide you with an overview. When folks get up and say they live on the other side of 80, this is where they're talking about. Moving on, I'm gonna just kinda go through the format in your staff report now. I'm starting with SEQA compliance. An environmental impact report was prepared for this project, and that was done per the California Environmental Quality Act. It was what we would call focused EIR. And I'm gonna skip this slide. So, what that means is, we prepared an initial study for the project and found that there were four areas where we identified potentially significant areas. Those were land use, transportation and circulation, hydrology, water quality, and noise. The remaining issues that you see up here, it's a much longer list, but these areas were determined to have less than significant impacts, so they were not addressed in the environmental impact report. You'll notice and you'll hear today from the community that this item, air quality, was addressed in the initial study, not in, in the EIR, and that is something that the community is concerned about. However, the Air Pollution Control District did analyze the potential impacts. They were reduced to a less than significant level in the initial study with mitigation measures, and that is why it's included in the initial study. I wanna point out that the initial study is Attachment A in the draft EIR, or Appendix A, I believe it is, I'm sorry, but it is in your draft EIR, which you should have received. Just to give you a quick background on the environmental impact report, it was, the draft EIR was released for a 45-day comment period in February of 2008, from February 1st to March 17th. And we did conduct a public hearing for the EIR before the Planning Commission on February 28th, 2008. The final, the final EIR was distributed for a 10-day review period in September of 2008. And just again, to reiterate that, should you choose to approve the requested conditional use permit, you will need to certify the final EIR, and again, adopt that statement of findings. Just also to let you know that publicist note, public notices for today's, today's hearing were sent to property owners within 300 feet of the project site, as well as individuals who provided their mailing address at a February 2009 community meeting that we had, and individuals who submitted correspondence regarding the project, so that's all the people that, that are in this attachment on your staff report, as well as individuals who provided comments on the draft EIR. So, it was a, a pretty good list of people. Okay, now, I'm gonna go back, if I got this right, yes, to the MAC meetings. We did take this project to the MAC on September 17th, 2009, as an action item of, you know, in preparation for this hearing. But I just wanted to let you know, and this kind of shows the timeline for this project, it's been going on for quite some time. These are all of the times it's been to the MAC either as an update or an informational item or action item, various steps along the way, we would take it as an action item. So, this is a list of that. But more, most recently, it was taken on September 17th, and the MAC adopted a motion to make no recommendation on the project, but they did suggest that the Planning Commission consider specific issues of concern that have been raised by the community. And then, those areas are water supply, traffic, noise, air quality, and quality of life. And their letter is attached, as Attachment E on the staff report. And I'm gonna go through, you know, these specific details in the staff report here. Just gonna move through here. I'm gonna try to get through these as quickly as I can, but there's a lot of detailed information. Again, what I miss, you can certainly ask for follow-up information from the appropriate staff. One thing that I wanted to touch on with regard to the project description, we already went through that slide with all of the proposed developments in the project. Additionally, the operation would be limited to the production of 300 cubic yards of concrete per day and could employ up to 13 full-time equivalent employees. I'll get into a little bit more about those requirements in just a minute. It has to do with water use. One thing I did wanna touch on in the project description, and I will go over it a little bit more in the environmental review section, is that the hours of operation that were proposed in the EIR were 5:30 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. When the applicant submitted their conditional use permit, they requested that the hours of operation be from 5:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. They had concerns that being required to be closed down off the site, out the door by 3:30 p.m. would not be possible in terms of trucks that had just returned at, say, 3, getting washed, that type of thing. So, we went back through the environmental document and with the EIR consultant, determined that this would not result in additional impacts if they were allowed to operate until 5:30 p.m. And that is part of the project description, that it would operate until 5:30 p.m. Again, I'll go through this in a little bit more detail in another section, but I wanted to get that in as part of the description. Land use, like I said, we've gone over the zoning and the land use designation. The zoning does allow for this type of use, the land use designation allows for this type of use, there's no rezone or general plan amendment required, it's, what is required is a straight use permit. And if you look here, you'll see that under C3, heavy commercial, concrete gypsum and plaster products actually typically require approval of a minor use permit. Because of that combining zone district that I talked about, that UP, that bumps it up to the requirement of a conditional use permit. So, that's why we are bringing before you a conditional use permit and not a minor use permit. With the exception of the single-family residents located to the north of the project site, and I showed you that in that aerial photo, but I can go back and take a look at that if you like. The area surrounding the project is compatible both in development and zoning. Here's the project site. These are all, this is developed with industrial, commercial, this is undeveloped, but it is zoned, commercial. So, like I said, with, with the exception of the residences to the north, it is all compatible. And again, these residences to, to the north are considered legally conforming. They are in commercial zone district, however they were there when the zoning was implemented years ago. The only potentially significant land use impact that was identified in the EIR was related to Policy 1E1 of the Placer County General Plan, and that states that the county shall only approve new industrial projects if there's adequate infrastructure. And we'll definitely get more into this discussion as this hearing goes on. The majority of that will be dealing with hydrology, the onsite well, but the county did make the determination based on the proposed project and mitigation measures that the proposed project would provide adequate infrastructure, and that would be using well and septic system. So, again, there are mitigation measures that require them to hook up to public water and public sewer when they are available. In the meantime, there are mitigation measures that have been incorporated into the conditions that would provide for that to be, for the onsite well and the onsite septic to be adequate infrastructure. I'm gonna move on to, in the staff report, environmental review. As I said, the EIR was prepared, it was a focused EIR. I went over a little bit the, the request for the hours to be extended until 5:30. I just wanted to touch on that a little bit more. What we determined was that extending the operating hours until 5:30 would not result in newer increased impacts, as, as I mentioned before, the plant's maximum production is limited to 300 cubic yards per day. So, even if they are able to. So even if they are able to operate longer, they are not permitted to increase their production, and therefore, it's anticipated there would not be increased noise, there would not be increased traffic. The operation level remains the same. Additionally, the hours that they are requesting to extend to do not dip into that nighttime noise hours where the threshold for the limits become lower. So based on those factors, we did determine that operation until 5:30 would not result in an increase in impacts discussed in the EIR, and that no additional environmental review would be required. The other thing I want to mention about the environmental document is that all of the potentially significant impacts were mitigated to a less than significant level, and there was, there were no significant and unavoidable impacts. Moving on to air quality, I'm just going to touch on this a little bit because there's a lot of technical information, and I'm going to let the Air Pollution Control District folks answer specific questions about that. As I mentioned before, air quality issues were analyzed in the initial study and found to be less than significant. So all of the impacts that were identified were mitigated to a less than significant level. There are a lot of concerns on behalf of the, on the part of the community with regard to air pollution, and as I said, those impacts have been addressed, limit, they are, have been reduced to a less than impact, less than significant level. And those mitigation measures that reduce those impacts are included as conditions of approval. Again, Air Pollution Control District staff can answer specific questions on that. Hydrology was analyzed in Chapter 6, and this deals mostly with that use of the onsite well, and which is a huge concern for the community. So again, this sort of goes hand in hand with the land use issue I spoke about. But again, the major concern is that the applicants are requesting to use a well to, to run the operation. I would just like to, to touch on the fact that the, there was a 72-hour pump test that was done on the well, and that was to determine the well's capacity. The capacity that was determined was 36,000 gallons per day. So with the limitations placed on the use permit, with the mitigation measures established, the applicants would not be allowed to use more than 10,000 gallons of that water per day. And that's where that requirement that they not produce more than 300 cubic yards of concrete comes in. So while they have this capacity for 36,000 gallons per day, the environmental impact report and the conditions of approval limit that to 10,000 gallons a day. Additionally, one thing that I want to touch on, because I think it's going to come up, I'm sure it will come up, I just want to clarify, that the applicants, I'm sorry, that staff received, subsequent to the September 17th, 2009 MAC meeting, correspondence that was prepared by Parker Groundwater, and this was prepared on behalf of the concerned residents. The applicants provided a response to those comments by way of a memo or response prepared by NGO, and that is attached, as Attachment F in your staff report. So there's going to be a lot of discussion about that. But again, the community members had concerns set forth in that memo by Parker Groundwater. The applicants then responded with the preparation by a hydrogeologist to those concerns. And staff has reviewed both of the memos and determined that the response prepared by the applicants are adequate and do address the concerns. One other thing to touch on with regard to the well and septic system and the onsite infrastructure, the applicants are also proposing to use a septic system onsite. Again, staff did review that proposal, establish mitigation measures that have been incorporated into the conditions of approval that would set forth, you know, the requirements for the design and the minimum capacity for that septic system. With those incorporated, the impact of using a septic system has been reduced to a less than significant level and has been determined to be adequate infrastructure. Wow, three more sections, okay, I'm going to speed up here. The other issue that was addressed in the EIR and was of concern to the community is traffic. The majority of the concerns expressed regarding track, traffic focused mostly on safety. So residents in the surrounding area were concerned that adding Livingston's concrete trucks to a road that's already, they have a feeling of it being unsafe, would just exacerbate the problem. And the EIR did identify potentially significant impacts as a result of the project. The impact was an incremental increase in the level of service, or the time it takes to get through the intersection at Ofer Road, Interstate 80, and Taylor Road, that off-ramp there, which isn't on here, I'm sorry, it's probably on one of the location slide. And then the other potential impact came from construction impacts. So this is the intersection I'm talking about, if I'm not mistaken. Both of those impacts have been mitigated to a less than significant level. The impacts to this intersection, the applicants are required to pay their fair share for improvements to that intersection. And then the construction impacts, the applicants are required to provide signage and a detailed work plan as to when they'll be working out there. The other impact that is mitigated is that the applicants do have to create project improvements along the front of the project to allow for better turning movements into and out of the project site. And then they will also make a wider shoulder for a bike path. Again, there were no impacts that were not able to be reduced to a less than significant level, and those mitigation measures that reduce the impacts are in the conditions of approval. Moving on to noise, again, with the exception of construction-related impacts, the EIR found that the project would not result in any potentially significant impacts related to noise. What was found in the noise study that was prepared is that the existing noise level in the project area, which is dominated mainly by the industrial noise from the existing operations and Interstate 80, created a relatively high ambient noise level. And what they found was, when they introduced into that noise, the potential, the projected noise from the concrete patch plant, it did not raise above that level, and it also remained below the thresholds for the Placer County General Plan and the noise ordinance. So again, the mitigation measures that were set forth regarding noise had to do construction hours, and that they clearly post when construction was going to take place, but that has been mitigated to a less than significant level. One, the last thing here that I'm going to touch on is the concerns raised by the community regarding the EIR, as you've probably gathered as I've gone through here, have been focused mostly on the onsite well, traffic, noise, and land use compatibility, as well as air quality. I just want to touch on the fact that we did receive quite a bit of correspondence regarding the draft EIR outside of the review and comment period for those documents, and not specifically tied to the conditional use permit. So all of those letters are what you find attached to your staff report, the big thick attachment in there. Staff did review these letters, reviewed the EIR to compare these letters and make sure they'd all been addressed, and they have. So what we found is in those letters in your staff report, there were no new impacts identified, no new issues identified that hadn't already been addressed in the EIR. There was one exception where a letter was submitted where the comments were not actually relevant to the scope of the project. So for example, we were requested in one of the letters that we consult with the US NOAA Fisheries and receive their recommendations regarding effects of threat in Steelhead. Well, the, the project had determined that there would not, it didn't even analyze the scope of effects to Steelhead because it's far beyond the boundaries of the project. And with the proposed project maintaining the water on site, recycling water on site, which we will get into, it's, it's beyond the scope of the project. So in that case, it wasn't even part of the EIR. Okay, with that, I'm at my conclusion. So based on the information that I've discussed in the environmental impact report, this project has been going on for quite a few years, and we've had an opportunity to vet out the concerns and prepare a comprehensive environmental impact report. Because the applicant is not proposing to change the zoning or make an amendment to the general plan, that is not an impact that we need to address. Based on the record in the staff report, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission approve the requested conditional use permit. We also would recommend that, that also includes the certification of the final EIR and the adoption of the statement of findings that you have received. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them or have somebody else answer them.
Okay, questions from the commission?
Maybe, one, if you go back to the overhead picture that shows the freeway and...
I might be going the wrong way, yes, I am. This one, or would you like the one that shows more?
I think it's back.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that one there. Where the project is, and you have the freeway, and then...
Yes.
East, east side where all the residents are...
The north side?
East side.
Over here?
Oh, on the other side of the freeway.
South side.
There, south side.
Okay.
There you go. What's, what's the setbacks, what's the nearest residence to the freeway from there, or distance?
Well, I know that the nearest, sorry, I know that the nearest residence to the project is, I believe, about 300 feet. But you're asking how close the residence is to the freeway?
Yeah, well, if you can just sort of point for us, what is that first...
I think that, I thought it was this one, but I think there might be one that's a little bit closer. But I, this is the one that I understand is the closest. Did I answer your question? I don't know how far that is from the freeway, I can tell you it's less than 300 feet.
Okay. Okay, any further questions?
Last question. Earlier you mentioned the Ofer intersection is going to get some upgrades, could you give us an example of...
Yes, here you go.
Use your mic, please.
Now?
Yes, much better.
Okay, sorry. The Ofer intersection, you had mentioned that there was going to get some upgrades as a result of the project. What types of things are they going to do, do you know?
Well, what I actually said was that the project is going to be required to pay into, pay a fair share of the cost of upgrades. So it won't necessarily be upgraded as a result of this project, but it was determined that this project would have an incremental impact on the level of service. So just to clarify that, that what they're required to do is pay their portion of improvements. For examples, my understanding is that, you know, that might be a signal or some sort of traffic device to increase the flow of traffic, but of course, I would probably defer that to DPW, to Andrew Gaber, who's here.
Over into roundabouts, you know.
I didn't want to mention that. I'll let Andrew mention that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Was somebody else going to address it too, or...
I'm sorry?
Or you said somebody from DPW was going to...
Andrew Gaber is here, and he'd probably have a better idea of what types of facilities would actually be constructed in that area.
Okay, yeah, step forward, Andrew.
Sorry, Andrew, I didn't mean to...
Nope, that's fine. Andrew Gaber, DPW Transportation. We've not done, we, we've talked with Caltrans, and that's how we know that they need to pay their fair share, because we know that, looking at traffic rejection, that we're going to need to do something at that interchange and intersection. Caltrans has had wonderful success with the roundabout up in Tahoe, up at Truckee. And so now that, we had, we did an analysis a couple of years ago of the Bell Road interchange, and again, did the configuration, that roundabout seemed to work there. And so Caltrans is taking this position that they seem to work very well. You don't have to maintain a signal, it's much easier to operate and what have you. And we're also finding that people are getting more and more used to seeing them and driving them, and so that it works better. So again, formal decision hasn't been made, but it's, Caltrans is much more accepting of that solution now than they were in the past.
Thank you, Andrew.
Okay, any more questions from the commission?
Yes, I have one. Concerning the water usage, how is the 10,000 gallons per day arrived at?
I'm, I'm sorry, I sat down over here. I'm going to ask Leslie Limbo from the Environmental Health Department to address that.
Hi, Leslie Limbo, Environmental Health. The 10,000 gallons per day, I believe it was originally a proposal of the applicant. But one of the things that we, we did in analyzing whether the well could serve the project is a 72-hour pump test was conducted. And this was based on a guideline provided by the California Code of Regulations for testing public water wells in fractured bedrock situations such as this. At the time we did the test, this was not in the California Code of Regulations, but rather it was a draft guideline by the state. We used this guideline to develop a testing model. So a 72-hour pump test was conducted. What the California Code of Regulations now say, and what it said in the draft guidelines was, when, when a, when a three-day test is done, 72 hours, then you apply a 25% penalty on the well. So since the well could produce a maximum of 36,000 gallons, and since the proposal was to use between 7,000 and 10,000 gallons of water per day, we determined that was up to 28% of what the capacity showed that the, the well could produce. So 10,000 gallons is based on that 25%, 10,000 gallons is actually 28% of what, of the maximum capacity that the well showed it could produce. Does that make sense, that I explained that very well?
Yes.
Okay.
I understand that part.
Okay, well, just maybe to carry forward with that question, then, you said 25%?
Yes.
And so then, the applicant actually could increase the use above what they proposed at this point in time, except for it's limited in this application? And that would require a future commission meeting in order to increase it?
That, that is, that's my understanding, is that, you know, if, if they were to connect to, say, public water service and, and destroy the well, they would obviously have access to more water. But because that condition of approval limits the amount of concrete that they can actually produce to 300 cubic yards a day, which is tied to that use of water, 10,000 gallons per day, in order for them to increase the amount of concrete they produce, they would have to come back and modify their conditions of approval.
And I'll just add to that, that in addition to, just because they get public water, and they're then able to maybe produce more concrete, there are other issues that would still need to be addressed. So for example, if they're going to increase their production, they're going to increase truck trips, potentially increase noise. So there are other factors that we need to take into consideration to look at, to go, to potentially, more than likely, go back and do additional environmental review if what they're proposing increases what was addressed in the EIR, do additional environmental review, and then modify the conditions set forth in the use permit to reflect whatever they're requesting. Does that make sense?
Sure does.
Okay.
That's for me, thank you.
Mike, a question here still. Is anyone other, any other outfits, they're using 10,000 gallons a day in this area?
I'm not aware of, of any others. Usually, if an individual or business is using a well, they have a right to drill a well and use the water on their property. In this instance, it, the use of the well is tied to the conditional use permit. I'm not aware of a, of a, of a similar situation in this area.
Question. Go ahead. Can you, the 10,000 gallons a day, equate that to something like a number of residences or something like that?
Okay. County code require, I think it's, the Development Manual requires that a domestic water well, something for a house, requires a minimum production of five gallons, five gallons per minute for a well, okay? If it, if it doesn't have at least five, it needs storage. If it's less than one gallon per minute, then the well is not suitable for domestic use. So considering that this, this is a 25-gallon-per-minute well, that would be, you know, equivalent to what we would like to see for five houses, five, five-gallon-per-minute wells, so...
So, I mean, but with five residents, residential units, would they consume 10,000 gallons of water a day?
Probably not, but this, the, the project isn't proposing to use 25 gallons. Probably not, but this, the, the project isn't proposing to use 25 gallons per minute. I'm sorry, oh, they're, they're proposing to use, you know, a quarter of that, which is about seven gallons per minute, I think, if my math is right, it's about seven gallons per, per minute.
And then, how is that quantified? I mean, is there a meter placed on the well, and is it checked, or how do we determine that, that we're staying within these parameters?
That's tied to the amount of concrete production, which would be 300 cubic yards of concrete per day, and that's as part of their use permit, that's how that would be limited.
I didn't get it, that answer, you didn't answer the monitoring part.
Oh, I'm, I apologize, what, what was the question?
How do we quantify the amount of the water they're actually using? I know in theory it equates to the, the, the concrete, but is there any way that it can actually be metered, monitored, or something, so that if at any time accusations are raised down the line, we have a, a clear-cut way to define that we're meeting these conditions?
There are no conditions of approval that are requiring any kind of monitoring on the well itself. Leah may, may need to, may be able to answer the question about the use permit?
Well, the, in answer to the question about, are we going to actually monitor that they do not use more than 10,000 gallons of water a day? No, there is not, there is no monitoring of that number. The only way, now, remember that we are a complaint-driven agency, so unfortunately, the only way that we would know that they had increased their production is if members of the community noticed that the truck trips had increased noticeably, or the noise level had, if, if, if the operations on site had noticeably increased, we could, we would go out there, once we received a complaint, and determine whether or not their production had increased. And my understanding is that one other opportunity we do have for monitoring this type of thing is that the Air Pollution Control District does require a permit that they have to submit, and this is getting into more technical information that I might not be clear on, I'm hoping there's Air Pollution Control District staff here, but I didn't see any, so we're working on that, that they have to submit kind of their releases, for lack of a better word, and, and they monitor those levels. So again, that is being monitored, and if there were any major increases there, we would know. But to answer your question directly, there is no monitoring to ensure that they do not use more than 10,000 gallons of, of water specifically.
Okay, any other further questions?
There's been, I did. There's been some discussion about public water. How far down the line are we looking at providing public water out in that area? Five years, 10 years, or never?
PCWA does have plans to bring water down Ofer Road, but there's no timeline that's been released from PCWA.
Okay, number two, how do we get the groundwater, I mean, the wastewater off-site? Is it going into a sewer system, or is it just going to run down the road?
No, it's not going to...
Because we've seen that with other batch plants.
No, there, there's a septic system design that's been submitted, it's a sand filter system. We've reviewed it, and it's adequate to serve the project. In addition, there's, there'll be a repair area for future use if, if that system is, is used to its capacity, and then when sewer is brought to the area, they will be required to connect.
Do we, do we have a time when the sewers might be brought in there?
No.
Just like the water?
Yes, exactly like the water.
And if I could, I just wanted to add, and, and maybe Rick Erie from ESD could expand on this, but the septic system is going to be used for the, like, the office, you know, that type of thing. The wastewater from the operations is not going into the septic system, there's a whole separate system dealing with the wastewater from operations, so if you have questions about that, Mr. Erie can answer those questions for you as well.
Okay, Mr. Erie, go ahead.
Thank you, yeah, there is a separation between the actual wastewater from, from the people that work at the plant and the surface runoff, and I think that was what your question was referring to. There's three different basins on the site that will be treating the runoff, there's a settlement basin, a treatment basin, basin, and as well as a detention pond, and they also have a filter media that will be treating the runoff before it gets into the detention pond. Each one of those ponds as well has a recirculation system that helps them recycle the water.
What's the capacity of the retention ponds? You say there's three of them?
Yeah, there's a settlement pond, a treatment pond, and a detention pond. The detention pond is sized, and I, I think the engineer can speak more to this, for the 100-year storm event. The other two ponds are sized based on usage, so if they're washing trucks, it's, it's only for the treatment of the truck wash-off and the parking lot area that the trucks travel over, and then it gets transferred into what they call a settlement, a settlement pond, and then the detention pond. So, they are sized appropriately based on hydrology.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it for our questions, for now?
Well, I think, just along the same lines, I don't think any of that water is not used, I think it's reused to make, you know, if they wash a truck out, then that, tomorrow they use it to make concrete with, and so there's, there's really no wasted, I don't think.
Oh, it's blue water, then?
Yeah, it's just recycled water, yeah, for the mixing of the concrete and stuff. And they also reclaim the aggregate that's taken out, that's part of the system. You save the water, and you save the aggregate, and reuse it as well, because there's a certain amount you wash out at the end of the day, so. And those ponds are, normally those ponds are accessible with equipment to clean them, yeah.
Okay, okay, does that do it for now?
Yeah.
Okay, at this point, we'll invite the applicant to step forward.
I have good news, my presentation will be short, and to the, hopefully to the basics. With all the information that's been shared in the years of time that this application's been in the system at the county, I wanted to focus on about seven quick categories, again, the foundation of this operation and this application. I want to describe who Livingston's, who they are, as far as a, an operator and a, a business group, what has happened to date, very briefly, as far as the chronology of this EIR and the process, and responding to public comments, some of the benefits that this application and business will bring to the county of Placer, a little bit on the compatibility of this particular use in what I can, what I call the Ofer industrial area or the Ofer industrial zone, both existing and proposed, as Leah mentioned. I guess a little bit more time will be spent on what this operation will look like. I think that's probably very important, that, you know, once you get past the understanding and the comments and the response and the science of all this, what will this operation actually look like in the future, hopefully sooner than later, for these, for this business operation. A, a little bit of mention on sustainability, I can proudly say, and I have a letter here, Leah didn't mention it, but already, it may, may already be in the system, because it was prepared on February 8th, and then sent up to the county probably that day or the day after, that describes this project as probably the first batch plant concrete operation in the United States that will be sustainably designed. So, as we all read and we all seem to admire and, and respect sustainability and green, this applicant, this application's really going forward with that idea. So, I don't, I can probably say with, with pretty high accuracy that this production will be the first sustainable, green operation of its sort, probably in the United States. We, I do have a letter from...
Okay, could I hold you up for just a second?
Sure.
And give you a chance to give us your name, and...
Oh, I apologize, James O'Malley.
What's your, okay.
Yes, I represent Livingston's Concrete.
Thank you.
So, after that, I'll, I'll probably go back to my seat and then take questions from the commission or any other person that may have a concern. Who is Livingston's? I wanted to make an introduction to the team that I've been working with, probably a little over a year now, and they're in the audience today. Mike Livingston is the chairman and one of the founders of this operation. Patty Henley is the president. Ted Henley is vice president of operations. Commissioner Crabbe, you had some questions concerning how this, these plants operate, and he's probably the best person in this room, maybe in this county or the industry, since he's been published on how they operate, how they've changed, and how they have become pretty much a, an arena of conservation and controls. Diane Kinderman is our legal counsel. Sean Munger is here from Engro, he pretty much is the focus on all the hydrology issues. Dave Fulton of Diamond Well, considered probably the county or regional expert in wells, operations of wells and capacity of wells, is here. Steve Aruda, our civil engineer. Scott Humphries is a Livingston's plant manager and operator, and probably an expert in dust control. And Brian Yates would be considered a, a focused expert on stormwater and, and in that arena that was brought up earlier. Experience, the Livingston's Concrete operation has been around since 1946. You'll see two pictures there on the, on the left and right, obviously, the original style of, of concrete batching or creation in the 50s, and then into the 80s, and the reason why I wanted to show the, an example of kind of how the, the business began, and then probably at its peak, is that how this, this operation and most businesses that we're all dealing with these days is changing. This application would be considered, and I've heard the word, a boutique operation. For instance, 300 cubic yards of material per day, and that's a maximum per day, that means if the sun is shining, it's not raining, and you can produce, and the market calls for it, this has been controlled to 300 cubic yards a day, that is a very small amount of material. But, you might ask, well, why? Because that's really how these operations are beginning to work with the future, with environmental concerns, with carbon footprint, and with all the standards and requirements of concrete reaching a certain facility in a certain location in a specific amount of What's happened so far? Well, it's been a long, a long travel. I've only been in, involved in this until recently, but the property was purchased in 2002, there was due diligence on the, prior to the purchase, everything indicated that it's a conforming use, this is where it's permitted, and it would work very well with this operation and this business plan for Livingston's Concrete. Really around 2006 to 2008 is when the environmental process began, the EIR and all the applications of the EIR and all the requirements of the EIR, all the comments in the EIR, and until recently, we did some focused meetings with people that are proponents, opponents, interested folks, neighbors, and so forth. That really happened last year. We had a community meeting held in the Veterans Hall this past August, and we just described the best we could with graphics and simple diagrams, the facts and the concerns that certain people have, have brought up, to the point where we had our MAC meeting in September, and here we are today in our planning commission. The benefits, this operation, again, is in a, small in form, will supply 13 jobs. I know it says 13 to 20, but we've accepted a condition that would not exceed a 13-job limitation. The tax revenues have been estimated around $500,000 per year, they go to certain services such as police, fire, and road improvements. The operators of this company are very proud about being stewards and citizens and, and provide benefits to the community, there's plenty of examples, I didn't want to make this too long of a presentation, where they work with the community, they become part of it, and want to be good stewards and good neighbors. And then, all of the compliances and the requirements, and maybe staff can go deeper into this, of, it's amazing, amazing, how much oversight these type of operations have to fall under, and work as far as the permit process. It'll be, one of the questions that came out early from the commission, they'll be dedicating 30 feet of private property, about half an acre, to provide for the future utility along the right-of-way. They'll be making Ofer Road full, full width improvements beyond their boundaries, based on traffic report and those kind of design measures. There will be cost sharing, as Leah mentioned, at the Ofer and Taylor Road intersection, and then, more importantly, they'll be providing a, a needed source that every individual I've come across in this world is required to utilize and, I'm sorry, and work with. Land use compatibility, this is a graphic that is an aerial photo, obviously, from high altitude, but what it does show, it shows the zoning in this area, the industrial zoning and the, and the commercial zoning, that is the future of the Ofer corridor. This falls, our, obviously, our project's right in the center, where it says project site, some of the designations. Overall compatibility, if you drive Ofer Road, and as I have many a time, it's definitely compatible to existing uses. Furthermore, I've met with many of those folks, and they're fine with this operation. Matter of fact, they look forward to it, because business generates business. If you go down Ofer Road and you see what's there, you've got, you know, American River Gas, and you've got ANA Materials and concrete production, you've got Livingston's Grading, you have Kuboto, all those owners and operators that I've met with welcome more business in this particular corridor. As a matter of fact, they welcome our design, which I'll get more into, because they think that'll be a precedent for probably a more attractive area in the, for future applications. There's a picture of ANA, and if you look back in the corner there, there is a, a batch That's a picture of American River Gas, and then that's a shot of Livingston's Grading, a different company, obviously, but definitely would show compatibility, so it's not like this operation or this kind of use is moving into an area where it doesn't really blend well, it blends very well. Aesthetics and visual impacts, there's our site, and here's our site plan. So, this is kind of the fun part, we've, we've kind of taken it the next step, and what I call above nexus requirements, and we're following all the rules, it's compatible use, but what else can you do if you really, you know, are true to your word, you want to become a, a good steward and a good neighbor? So, we've put some effort into the design, and one of the comments and concerns by some folks that live in the area is like, hey, man, it's okay if it's here, I want to see it. So, we've gone to a great extent to provide for a plan that looks like this, which is very well screened. The property sits about 28 to 30 feet grade below I-80, so that, that right away gives you a very healthy screen from Interstate 80, and we would, you know, in that zone, there's a 30-foot buffer zone, we'd landscape the berm with species of trees that are indigenous to the area, that would grow well and actually kind of blend with what's existing out there today, that would provide a great screen. We would landscape the entry and provide a nice theme monumentation, I, I don't think there's really any kind of signage ordinance, so we're kind of creating policy to some degree, or design policy along the way, and hopefully be an example for future applications. There's a landscape setback along I-80 that, that we would provide for, and then the structure, we would also provide screening for it. One of the features that I kind of, I guess, put my two cents in is there's a 15,000-gallon tank on site, and it's not for production, it's for fire protection. So, if you're going to have a tank, why not make it attractive to the architecture? By the way, that's the 30-foot setback, that would go well with what I've been referred to as old Auburn or fruit shed architecture. So, we're promoting this style of architecture and this theme for this facility. Again, I think it'll probably be the first in California that really follows a architectural theme that blends well with the community, and some kind of historical preference in the area and Ofer Road, and, you know, I guess some of our neighbors said, hey, man, what are you, what are you doing? This looks kind of nice, and I go, well, that's the intent, is to set new guidelines in a new format for an attractive facility along this business corridor. So, off in the left-hand corner is an idea of how that tank will look, and we'll be going through further design reviews with the county. You know, call it, everyone kind of has a name, but I've been, I've been asked to call this a fruit shed style architecture or old Auburn, so that'd be the tank. If you look at the buildings and the monumentation, they'll all follow that same theme, corrugated steel, some, you know, some, you know, lumber look, that's really kind of more the fun part of, of this application. These are cross-sections on how it will be screened from Ofer Road as you're traveling, you know, I guess it'd be east or west on that, and/or I-80, and how that'd be screened as well from, from travelers. It would be nice, possibly, and again, this will probably follow up more in final design, building plans and so forth, if there could be some kind of advertisement or some kind of signage program, but the idea is to keep the theme attractive and, I guess, old school in nature. These are some of the features that our planners and designers are, have utilized in these design concepts, and again, it's corrugated steel and that kind of look and appearance, if you look, I've gotten different kinds of comments as far as the, the shell or the facade on the Auburn structure, but I think it was a good example... on the Auburn structure, but I think it was a good example, and some of these other photographs we've taken around the area to use. Sustainability measures. Again, I have a letter, I want to make sure it was in the record, and this letter came from Ms. Chandra Kraut, who I guess has the title of the queen of green, at least in California, now moving out to different parts of the states. But Chandra has reviewed this application, reviewed our design, and commends it. And she'll be working with us on making this facility sustainable and green for energy conservation and those type of measures, which not only is it smart to do for conservation, but I think it's the future. It's just some of the ideas that are being brought to the table. And again, this compliment will be added to the building plans when our architect actually starts working on those drawings. With that, I'd just like to hand in this letter, if it wasn't part of the file, and this is from Ms. Chandra Kraut, who has reviewed this application. And we're here for any questions. We have all the experts. There'll be some, I doubt there'll be questions we haven't really responded to that we don't have an answer for. Thank you very much.
Questions from the commission?
Yes, please. Is there any retail sales on site?
No.
None?
No.
So I can drive up there with a trailer and say, fill my trailer with concrete, and I want to take it home?
Take it, yeah. That's the first one I've heard that question. The answer's no.
Most batch plants do provide retail sales, don't they?
This one won't. I don't think you'd do that in any of your facilities, do you?
For the concrete itself, we won't set up to do that.
Okay. For the concrete itself, is there any retail sale on the site of any kind?
If you needed expansion joint or something.
Such as?
I'm Patty Henley, president of Livingston's Concrete. You needed some rock for your yard? Yes, I'm sure I could accommodate that.
Patty?
Aggregates.
I understand that. Isn't there some rock places along Taylor Road right near there?
A&amp;A.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
Where'd you go?
I have one question, because it seems to be a real hot button on the water. And I don't know if you have it built-in. I see you have your, from your pump house to your holding tank. If you just put in a flow meter, so that way, if you get into problems, you can have the county come up and look at it and say, yeah, you meet all your standards. Is that something that you would be...
You know, I am not the person to ask on this. I defer to my husband. I think that there's been some talk about whether there are wells with meters, and I haven't been given an affirmative on that. I think that's what you're asking for.
Yeah, I'm just asking if something like that, because it seems that's a real hot button, is the wells and water. And it looks, the way you have it set up, it'd be something very simple, not real expensive to put in, and something that would hopefully protect you and then...
Sure, come on up.
I'm Ted Henley, Livingston's Concrete Operations. We have a batch computer and a batch logic system, whatever you want to call it. And in that, it meters all the water, all the aggregates, all materials that go into the batching process. That's all documented. It's a matter of record for weights and measures, and all the water that goes through the plant in the batching process would go through that and be documented. So if, for some reason, that was to be found a condition of approval, I'm sure that we would be looking at that application as a means to monitor it. And that is through a meter. That's been checked and has to be certified based on weights and measures.
Okay, yeah, that sort of answers. Just something that backs up what you're saying you're going to use for, in case somebody from the public said, hey, I'm going to...
Yeah, it's all a matter of weights and measures. It's all documented.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Harry, you had another question?
Yeah, what's the capacity of a truck? How many yards?
Nine and a quarter yards.
Nine?
Nine and a quarter yards.
Ninety?
Nine and one quarter.
Okay, I'm just trying to see how many truckloads are going to be leaving there every day. If you've got 300 yards, 300 gallons that you can use, about how many trucks will be leaving the site per day and using that road?
I'm going to have to defer to the traffic on that.
Got to deliver it.
It's a lengthy process, and I don't have that number off the top of my head, but we've addressed that.
Andrew Gaber is going to come up and address that.
Okay.
Well, this...
It's probably in there someplace, I just didn't see it.
Hey, James, we may have you come back if somebody else has a question for you, so you can sit down.
Stay close. Thank you.
My recollection is that we calculated it was approximately 120 to 160 truck trips a day. Now, that includes not only your cement trucks, but your gravel deliveries, the people that work at the plant, and so that's what we figured the total number of trips would be per day.
And that's both going and coming, when you say truck trips?
Correct.
So it'd be half that amount as the number of trucks.
Right. But also, remember, that includes people making deliveries of gravel for them, of people making some of the concrete or the cement mixture. So the deliveries also included in that.
Will that be seven days a week? What day?
My recollection, it's only a five-day-a-week operation.
Is that correct?
That's what I wanted to mention, because that number gets mis-skewed and misinterpreted. It's on a full day, a full day of operation where you'd be creating 300 yards on a full day of capacity. In this business...
Wait a minute, 300 yards and how many?
Per day.
Okay.
On a full day. It's not seven days a week, and it doesn't, you're not allowed to, quote, "batch concrete" if there's a threat of weather. True. Another one of those government requirements.
I'm no bridge builder. Don't tell me that, please, because I've seen batches, trucks come to a site.
I'll get the address up here. How's that?
That's okay. I don't care to elaborate on it.
I think there's one other issue that's being bypassed here, and that is that not every truck that leaves there leaves with nine and a quarter yards. A vast majority of the trucks leave with three and a half yards or four yards, whatever the job needs. And so it's almost impossible to get your arms around an exact...
Yeah, the guideline, the standard and the measure is the full capacity, and that's what the environmental impact report, they look at the worst case, so 300 yards per day. But Commissioner Gray, I was surprised, too. And it has to do with the runoff. If there's a threat of rain, you cannot operate your facility, and that's the fact of this business, and Ted lives it. So I always want to be careful that this isn't a six-day-a-week or a five-day-a-week operation where you're creating 300 yards and all the impacts from that 300 yards. It's just not the case.
Okay, I think you said that you're not going to, it's not going to be 300 yards for, was it five days a week? For 360 days a year?
Ours would be, could be, six days a week and a maximum of 300 yards in the impacts of 300 yards per day. But you wouldn't take six times 300 times 52 to come up with your amount of trips and so forth, unless you were doing an EIR or some modeling where you do look at worst case to get your numbers of average daily trips, then you associate that with the amount of improvements. The overall traffic impacts on Ofer Road, from what I've read, and correct me if I'm wrong, and the traffic report was 1.3%, an impact of 1.3% of the trips on that road. So you look at that, and they have measures, and they take those numbers, and they require you to make certain improvements, which this application will fulfill.
Okay. So you're saying that the EIR looked at the worst case, and you don't anticipate that? Is that right?
Yes, yes. Again, it's market-driven, weather-driven, and customer-driven, but no more than 300 yards in a full day of operation.
Okay. Then is your question, Harry?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more?
Yes. You said that there was a, or referred to another batch plant in the area. You showed us a picture, you said they're batching in the back. How much do they produce per day, do you know?
Well, Ted, the closest is in Lincoln? Oh, the A&amp;A? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's for you and I. A yard or so.
Okay, so it's not an actual batch plant? We think of it, okay.
Can I just, while James is looking for that slide, I think you're referring to the batch plant that's associated with A&amp;A stepping stone across the street? And it's my understanding that that is a much smaller piece of equipment, their batching equipment is for some of the work that they do on site where they create actual stepping stones. So my suspicion is that the size of that batching equipment is much smaller than the proposed use, but it's a much, it's for a much different operation. And I believe they do allow some retail. If somebody were to drive up, they could rent a trailer, but it's not anywhere to the scale of what's proposed here, because it's a completely different type of use.
Thanks.
That is more retail. You're welcome.
Okay, that helps. Let's see.
Could I back to the green?
Okay, your question's answered, so he doesn't have to keep looking for the slide.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. However, I would like you to bring up a slide showing your proposed improvements on the site, the trees and the burns, et cetera. Can you bring that up?
Sure.
Just had a question on that.
There's what you were looking for earlier, I'm sorry. That's the facility at A&amp;A.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Those trees that you show outlining the property, these are, do you have an idea what kind of trees? You said that they might be a local or indigenous type. Are they therefore not evergreens, which means that for half of the year, you see right through them, or what?
No, I've walked the site, Commissioner Gray, a few times, and that's exactly what it looks like. It looks like some form of scrub oak or evergreens. And what we would want to do, because that's the whole idea of sustainability, is bring indigenous species in. They last longer, they usually are less maintenance, but not bring in ornamentals. So it appears like it's still part of the natural landscaping as it is today.
Okay, so what I'm asking is that those basically would show green all year round?
Evergreens.
Pardon?
You keep it evergreen? We're open to any plant palette that we can work with the county on that would make sense, that works with the requirements of the county. So we haven't gotten to that point yet, but we've suggested that we do this.
You proposed this, but not part of the application. So, okay. How about on the, you mentioned, and I think I may have misunderstood, but you showed a, or mentioned a screen for the tower? If you look back in the minutes, you did.
You're looking for what again, Commissioner Gray?
A screen for the tower?
Oh, yes.
Your words, I believe?
Yeah. Well, if you look at the cross-sections, and it was very early on in discussions with county staff and some of the people that were concerned about how this may appear traveling west on I-80.
Actually, I'm not really interested in traveling at all. I'm interested in across the freeway, what people would look at for basically the rest of their lives as opposed to somebody driving through.
Right. Well, there'll be a berm along Ofer Road, and that'll screen...
No, the other side. The people, I believe, would be looking down on this plant?
There you go.
There you go. See, you show 80 with a line of sight.
Yeah.
Now, let's continue that line of sight from the left going up to where these cameras... What is that view?
Well, that's what we're definitely trying to prove, that if you're traveling along Ofer Road, the screen, the line of sight will be screened by a berman vegetation.
Let's go to the other side.
What you'd really see, as far as the tower?
Go to the other side. B1?
Yeah, I don't have that. I don't think there's a big enough, oh, from I-80?
Right. I see the line of sight from I-80.
Right.
Okay, I'm curious about the line of sight from the other side of the freeway, looking down on the plant.
I don't have that information. You mean...
Well, I was asking in regards to, you were mentioning a screen for the tower, if that would be projected there.
Jim, I think the question is, you're putting some design elements in it to not make it look like a batch plant tower.
Correct.
From what I've, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're trying to incorporate the look of that tower, and I think that's probably more of the question that you're asking.
Right.
Is what are the neighbors going to see if they're looking over the freeway down there? They're going to see something that looks more probably, I don't know, when I look at it, I guess, since I'm more of the agricultural look, of something that would be like a silo in an old farm and ranch, something that has a little architecture and...
Yes.
...feel to it, so it doesn't look like a batch plant.
Yeah, the majority of the site is open. There is, it's not...
Well, you mentioned that there was going to be a screen, I'm trying to get an idea of what you're thinking about.
Yes, yes. That's been the idea. There's, if I take the elevation of 80, and I can't really, you know, give you much indication of if we go to the east of 80 up on the hill, because you're looking down, I can make the comment that it's going to be a lot more attractive than what's there today as far as some of the existing uses along Ofer Road. But what we're really focused, Commissioner Gray and Commissioner Denio, is where the elevation change would be from I-80 and the balance of the tower. For instance, if the tower is 40 feet in height, and that's right around where we're at, we're not asking for variance, that's our height limitation, what would be above the grade of the freeway? So if you were traveling on that freeway, you wouldn't see, quote, "the extension of that tower," i.e. the additional 10 feet. So we've been working with staff on the concept of how we would screen that and how that would be blended with the balance of the architectural treatments on the overall plan. That's what we would hope you would see.
I believe the question the commission is asking, on the picture you have up there, there's the tank and there are trees. Are those trees on the Ofer side or the freeway side? On that picture right there?
Yeah. There's some right-of-way.
This is the part that you're...
That's the private property.
I am.
Yeah, the PL.
And this here is what you're questioning.
Yeah.
And you're hitting pretty close to some of the things that we've talked about and keeping alignment with this idea. Okay? And I don't know whether to call it Ohio, but that's what I'm kind of thinking of with the same type of shed look to the silo, rain silo type of look. Other things that we've talked about is you see more and more of, you know, celebrating, in my mind, mandarins. You know, there's a lot that could be done in the Ofer-Newcastle area with the products that they produce and maybe somehow blending that into our design.
Yeah. Okay, so the tower where you batched the cement, that is, I think I hear you saying that's going to be architecturally designed also?
That is our intention, yes.
Okay. And then, I think the question was, there's some residences across the freeway on the other side that may be of a higher elevation, and I would guess it's likely that there's no way that you can totally screen the site. Some people, if they're higher on the hill, are going to see something there. I think that's what you were saying. Is that correct?
As they currently are, yes.
Okay. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Jeffrey?
Back to the neighboring use, we were talking about A&amp;A. They're in with a conditional use permit also?
Yes, they've been there for quite a few years.
Okay. Do they have any restrictions on their daily water consumption?
I'm not aware that they do.
Okay. The other commercial uses and industrial uses that are in that area right now, are they all on well and septic also?
I believe so. Where's Leslie? Yes.
Yes.
Yes, there is no public water or sewer in the area.
And do any of these businesses have caps on their consumption of water?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, is that, do it for the commission at this time? We'll have more chances later.
Look forward to it.
Okay. So with that, did you want to address something?
If I may, please, Chair, fellow commissioners, good morning. My name is Diane Kinderman. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Abbott and Kinderman in Sacramento, and I represent Livingston's Concrete. And I just want to mention two items. First of all, you did receive a letter from us, I believe, very late this morning. I realize, I apologize, that is not our typical way of communicating with the commission, but we were rapidly trying to just legally respond to comments from the opponents. We conclude in our letter, basically, it's a legal analysis. We conclude the sequo process, documentation is legally adequate. This project is consistent, of course, with your zoning and the general plan, and so there should be no legal impediment to the approval of this project today.[1781.83] That's all that the letter says. We wanted to make a record of it. But I also wanted to mention, you know, I think Mr. Henley had addressed this very well, how they monitor the, how the material, how much material is used in the recipe of batching, and that includes water. They are willing to add a meter onto the well if that would satisfy everyone's concerns. I know in the community, there's a concern also about setting a precedent for doing it in the county, but this applicant is interested in getting their project moving forward, and they certainly do not object to the application of well monitoring on their property. And we do have language that we've come up with with staff that we're happy to add as a condition of approval on monitoring. So if that would quell any concerns of the commission or the community, the applicant's willing to do that.
Okay. I appreciate it. For now, we'll open it up for the public, and then if you want to bring that back after the public comment, then we'll give you a chance at that time.
Well, thank you. I appreciate your time.
Chairman Johnson, I have a comment on this document we received this morning when we got here. It's unfair for the audience and the residents not to have a copy of this to look at. I hate to come to a meeting and then have something like this dropped on my desk. I'm not going to read it, and I'm not going to take the time to read it. You had enough time to answer all these questions beforehand, but don't come in at the last minute and give us something I saw.
I understand, and once again, we apologize for the lateness of it. We just got the letters late, and so we wanted to, as a group, address all the categories of comments. So it is in the record, we wanted to get it in the record, and I certainly understand that you wouldn't want to read it, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let me see, at this time, let's see a show of hands of everybody that wants to testify. Okay, it looks like we have a pretty large number of people, and we want to give everybody a chance to come forward and, and provide their testimony. So what I'm going to do is limit everybody's testimony to three minutes. You'll see some lights go on. When the yellow goes on, it means you're getting close. When the red goes on, then it'll be time to step down. So hold your, your comments to three minutes. And then also, if somebody has eloquently expressed your issue before you, it's really not necessary for you to come forward and make the same comment. You're welcome to, but it's not necessary for you to do that. So I'm going to ask that you kind of, I would call it cue-up, that you, first one come to the microphone, and then kind of line up behind so that we can move through this pretty expediently. And also, when you come up to the microphone, I want you to give us your name as well as your address. Okay, so I see somebody standing here. You're welcome to begin your comment and testimony.
Thank you, thank you very much. My name is Jack Sanchez. I live at 3675 Larkin Lane in Auburn. I was born in Ofer at my grandmother's house. We've lived in Ofer since 1888. When I was born in 1939, there were only 15 homes in Ofer, so I've seen tremendous expansion. I've submitted documentation all through this process. I only have one anecdote to add for the edification of the board, and that has to do with water. My son Jeffrey just bought a eight-acre estate very close to this plant, and within one year, his well went dry. And just this month, he's finished a well project of going from a 500-foot-deep well that went dry to a 1,250-feet well that has six gallons per minute at the cost of $36,000. I'm not going to draw pictures for you or connect dots, I'm just saying that a well that takes out 30, that has the capability of taking out 36,000 gallons from a residential community is a disaster in the making. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
My name is Rick Klepper. I live in 8230 Ridge Road, Newcastle, California. And just to, we live downhill from that project, and we get a little less than five gallons per minute. And I'm not sure how the hydrology and all that works, but our concern is there's a lot of water usage, and we're downhill, and we don't want our well to, to dry up either. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, my name is Bill Yates for the law firm of Kenyon Yates, and I'm here on behalf of the Ofer Area Property Owners Association. And we appreciate staff has included all the letters and, and our consultants' comments about the draft EIR. I did have one question on the, on the question of the, of the timeline for when you might get public water. I believe we, we pointed out, based on the letter that PCWA sent, that they really don't expect water in this area until 2018. So this batch plant will be operating on this groundwater basin or broken-up granitic stuff for, for quite some time. And I also don't think it's accurate to say that the recycled water is going to be used in the overall operation to the extent as described. I don't think you can use recycled water in the, in the making of the concrete. I don't, I think there are some real structural limitations on that. I think the recycled water may be used for maybe washing down the trucks or something like that, but certainly someone could address that particular issue, some of the new items that came up in the, in the discussion. I was surprised, it's called a focused EIR, yet there really was no provision in the IR that, that analyzed air quality impacts. And the consultant that we hired to look at that issue pointed out, as you all began to discuss, how difficult it is to address the question of truck traffic, when in fact no truck really goes out fully loaded. I mean, the waste stations will probably limit that. What you're, you know, maybe preparing and, and putting out for the job isn't going to be a full truck. So all of that diesel truck traffic that comes in and out and around this neighborhood is going to have an effect on air quality, and it wasn't, there's no baseline. There's no baseline analysis. I mean, one of the fundamental parts about the California environmental quality is you've got to compare it to the baseline. There is no baseline analysis here, no analysis at all on air quality, yet this area is at non-attainment. I mean, issues like asthma, all sorts of things that unfortunately affect this area, and yet this EIR didn't even analyze the mobile source impacts of this project. I think that's just an illegal omission, unfortunately, and really calls into question this concept of a focused EIR. That was my principal comment. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Get it down to my level here. I'm Barbara Van Riper. I live at 270 Geraldson Road, and the planning department is right. This plant will have, plan will have no impact on Placer County. It will impact the residents that live nearby and those that use Ofer and LaZanas Road to get to I-80. You won't have to deal with the 60 truck trips a day by Livingston's own estimate when in full operation. The county doesn't have to worry about the noise complaint because the construction noise complaint has been removed. You don't have to, they don't have to abide by that during their construction time. You won't have to deal with all of the, the truck trips and, and the smell of the diesel from the trucks and the dust from the plant, which could also affect the fish in Auburn Ravine with possible chromium-6 contamination. You will not have to deal with the noise of the backup beepers on the trucks, much louder than that on Interstate 80. I can hear 80. I don't hear any beepers on 80. If Baltimore Ravine Plan goes through, there will be even more traffic on Ofer Road. You won't have to deal with complaints of non-compliance when this plant is in full operation. That's the state's responsibility. And we all know the state has so much money, they can have inspectors there during their construction and operation. We've been told we can't, can't even go on the property because it's private property. But would we know if they were in compliance? Will we get regular reports? That has never been answered. Again, the county won't have to worry about that. You won't have to deal with the dry wells. A staff member told us, wells go dry all the time. Do any of you really believe that pumping from a well less than 1,000 feet from current wells for five or over five years or more, depending on when the PCA, PCWA finishes their water line, will not affect surrounding wells? No one knows how much water is available in that well. No tests have been done to determine how much water is there in the aquifer. Even though we have asked for additional testing on numerous occasions, Livingston has not done that. I will be finished in a moment. My husband and I worked with many others and the county on drafting the Ofer General Plan in 1983. Bob and Mona Forrester were the ones that foresaw we would have a problem with the smaller zoning. Ofer property owners asked for five acres, but the county asked for 2.3 and 4.5, which is my property. It would be best. 62% of the property owners responded that they agreed with the rural zoning of our properties, a zoning that this county is now disputing. We were years ahead of Placer Legacy in trying to keep some rural areas in the county. You should be applauding us. It would be interesting, I will, it will be interesting, okay. By.
Okay, just summarize if you could, briefly.
May I submit this?
You can, you surely can.
Okay, because I only have one line left.
Okay.
It would be interesting to, to investigate, to find out how this project was allowed to start, let alone get this far. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Say, would you like to submit that to, to the commission? Just lay it on the desk right here?
Right here? Oh, okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next gentleman.
Hi, my name is John Votino. I live at 205 Pondview Lane, Newcastle, just slightly over a mile from the facility. And I have a couple of concerns, one of which actually just occurred to me while I was sitting here. I heard quite often that there was less-than-significant impact, and it was a very arduous process that they had gone through. I think that just the fact that it's taken this many years, and if they had successfully mitigated to be less-than-significant impact, I would imagine that this room would be empty, first off. And secondly, less-than-significant impact is more qualitative than quantitative, so to me, that doesn't really answer my question. So for example, how far away from the plant do you have to be before there is no air impact? How far away from the plant do you have to be before there is no water impact? So I didn't get quite the clear answers that I was hoping to get, first off. Secondly, from the standpoint of a well, I, I think I haven't got the questions answered in terms of, a house consumption is much less, and the refresh rate of a well, a residential well, if it diminishes over time, would not be noticed, wouldn't be noticed by the homeowner until it didn't work anymore. So while there's plenty of water right now to start this facility, there's no impact into what happens a couple of years from now. And my concern is that my neighbor, for example, has a 380-foot well that's 380 feet deep. It already has a problem. And he's been talking to the local well drillers in the area who are telling him that the average well depth has been increasing over time. So as people move to the area and as businesses come to the area, there's going to be much more of a constraint on the local resources. And this is a highly concentrated usage of the local resources, as I see it right now. And my concern is, is that the impact, not one week, one month, one year, but what is going to be the overall impact down the line when a lot of wells dry up? So, and my concern is that I wouldn't know that that's going to happen. The second thing I would request is that if there are plans for sewer and water to come here, I would, I would respectfully request that that be added as a condition to the application, that when and if those are available, that they do make use of those. That was it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Patricia Burke, 1700 Country Hill Run, Newcastle. I have a letter from Eleanor Petuski of 835 Foyer Lane, Newcastle, and she has asked me to read it because she had to leave early. Eleanor is the president of the Newcastle Community Association, which has 177 members. Attached to her letter is a petition containing 72 signatures, and this is the letter. Dear Commissioners, I have written you as president of the Newcastle Community Association opposing the construction of a concrete batch plant on Ofer Road. I am now addressing you as a resident of Newcastle who is greatly concerned about the impacts of a heavy industrial plant being plopped down in the rural Newcastle-Ofer area. This project will affect my neighbor's health, safety, access to water, and peace of mind. Building a heavy industrial plant on the buffer zone between two highways and then hooking it up to well water in a septic system is third-world thinking at best. Placer County's General Plan Policy 1E1 states that the county shall only approve new industrial development that has adequate infrastructure and services. At one time, it was predicted that county water in a proper sewer system would be in place by 2011. Projections for completion of infrastructure in this area now hover between 2018 and 2020. This project should and must be denied on this basis alone. People have a right to their water. This project not only exceeds the zoning called out in the Ofer General Plan, but will suck at least 10,000 gallons of water a day out of the ground if a resident's well goes dry or loses pressure. They have no recourse but to fight Livingston on their own. That's hard to do on a fixed income or when your entire salary goes to raising your family. Livingston already has plants in Lincoln, Olivehurst, North Highlands, and Rancho Cordova. I question the need for this low-producing plant in our community which threatens our citizens' access to water on their property. Oversight is a big issue. The county has supposedly limited production to 300 cubic yards of concrete per day, six days a week, which will use about 3,120 gallons of water per year. But the county has stated emphatically that they will provide no oversight. And I'm going to make this real short. The solution is to recognize the fallacy of this project now and never let it be built in the first place. Thank you for your consideration. Please do the right thing and deny this conditional use permit, and I'd like to submit Eleanor's letter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, step forward.
Hi, my name's Debbie Peterson. I live at 10267 Hillview Road in Newcastle. We live directly across the freeway. I don't know if somebody could bring up the aerial of showing the other side. Earlier, you were asking about the closest resident. That would be me. My family and I live on six, or three and a half acres, and we are directly across the way. At the bottom of our property, we're on a hill, most of Hillview is on a hill, right? And our well is at the bottom of our property, directly across from the Livingston site on the freeway. The well report within the 72-hour test and all that said that the area of influence would affect 375 feet around the proposed site. We, our well is within 250 feet of the proposed, uh, proposed site. We're very concerned about our well. We get seven to eight, what is that, gallons per minute, and our well struggles to keep up with our family of six and my small farm. I think my biggest concern is the children. These are our four children. On Hillview Road in our neighborhood, there are over 25 kids, from teenagers to infants. I'm greatly concerned about the air quality. I know that they have definitely come up with some great ideas to try and minimize the risk of exposure to some of the chemicals that are in concrete, but the plain and simple fact is technology fails, human error happens, accidents happen, and we're going to be breathing those accidents. It says right here, and I know that some of the chemicals vary with different forms of concrete, but all concrete has chemicals that cause cancer, plain and simple. Concrete needs certain things to make it concrete. This says, I'm shaking, sorry, warning harmful if inhaled, and avoid breathing dust, exposure, long-term excessive inhalation over an extended period of time may result in the development of pulmonary diseases. There's silica, all kinds of things. And this is a very empty bag, and this is just the residue, and I'd like to see how far and how fast that goes. That will go across I-80. We will breathe it.
I think we will, too, and.
It will meet us. It will reach my kids. I am a plaster-grown producer in the process. It will affect my crops, my honeybees, and trying to produce food for our Placer County people. There's farmers who will be significantly impacted. All I ask is that you would think about this. It's only less-than-significant for the people who don't have to see it, smell it, breathe it, and hear it every day like us.
Okay, thank you.
My name's John Gilmore. I live on 10271 Hillview Road. I'm Debbie's neighbor. I'm Debbie's neighbor. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak about this and provide public comment regarding the Livingston Batch Plant. I have many concerns with the concrete project, and I only have time to address a few of those issues, the very worst of the issues. If you have any questions, feel free to ask. First issue I'd like to touch on is the noise. One of the major issues that I've touched on ever since the very beginning of this project is the fact that this freeway was repaved. The noise study was performed prior to the repaving of Interstate 80. The county has allowed the applicant to exceed the noise levels because the ambient noise levels were based on old data. It's based on a really loud freeway at the end of its service life. And one of my major concerns, and I've been making this time after time after time, I put in the initial study, I put it in the draft, I put it in the final, every time I get the same answer, oh, it's SEQA. SEQA requires you to use a date after a certain point. Well, Commissioners, I ask you to investigate this, please. SEQA also states that anything that has a, that has, SEQA also states that anything that is reasonably foreseeable with the ambient noise, anything that would be reasonably foreseeable would have to also be considered in that analysis. And the freeway was repaved at, at the very last part of the prod, as the very last part of the repaving of Interstate 80 and the work that was done to Interstate 80. That work was done in 2002. The repaving work was immediately thereafter. The SEQA documentation for that project was already previously approved and previously implemented. The Department of Public Works knew very well that this was happening. I knew when I bought my house in 2003 that this project was, that this project was going to commence, that they were going to repave Interstate 80 and it was going to be quieter. It is statistically found to be six, six to seven decibels quieter. The second issue I'd like to touch on, touch on is the water. I'd like to refer you to page 79 of your staff report. In there, you'll notice the response to the, is the INCO well response. They state in that there is only one well located within 375 feet. It is indicated in that, in that report that they base that based on a conversation with diamond well drilling. Send that report back. Make them do the real report, the peer review report that we asked for in the MAC. This isn't something that we, this, the well study itself is something that we can vary, we can do this. There are three wells within 375 feet, three wells. There's not one, there's three wells, three additional wells. So two of those, I'm sorry, two of those are additional. And again, let me speak out against using this, this project for, for this project to connect to the well and septic system. It is against the county plan to even allow that to happen in the first place. Think of the precedent you're setting. I'll end it there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Georgia Barron, and I live at 950 Taylor Road in Newcastle. I've developed my 12-acre property as the Newcastle Wedding Gardens and Red Horse Barn. We do weddings and special events at our location. I went through all the county zoning and worked closely with your group to operate on, under very, very strict guidelines. We have a nice business. I'm happy with what I do, but I'm appalled at what I'm hearing, an option for somebody to come in and make huge amounts of noise for the hours of the week that they're planning. They call it a heavy industrial area. I would call it a light industrial area, and there are homes around it, as you're obviously hearing and know about. We can operate from 10:00 in the morning, three days a week, until as late as 10:00 at night, two nights a week, and we have nice music playing. I also am concerned that, I don't see anything, that there's a plan or a developed idea for where they would enter and exit, all these gigantic trucks coming in and out of this. I would hate to think they might drive down Taylor Road in front of my weddings when I'm having a ceremony and rumbling around the neighborhood. I would propose it would only be an entrance at the 193. I am a pro-business person. I have been a business owner for over 32 years, but I am completely opposed to this project. And I'm, I'm really appalled on so many levels to see how different that they're treated for the revenue that I'm assuming you're looking to bring into Placer County than somebody like we are treated that live there every day. And we have gone out of our way to make our neighbors happy, and we're happy to do so, but I don't see any of that coming from this group. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Okay, thank you.
Is this still morning?
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Deborah Nyland Jarvis. I reside at 840 Lozano's Road. I have over 25 years professional managerial experience in community and economic development for government agencies. I am not anti-business. I am very much anti-Livingston Batch Plant. As a quick aside, I do happen to know that Placer County's 2000, Water Agency's 2018 estimate of being able to bring to water is entirely contingent on the economy. So one needs a crystal ball to know if 2018 will even be that. But that's not what I choose to address. I choose to address the traffic, most particularly, living on Lozano's Road, if I want to go anywhere except by taking the Bald Hill Road and go to Bel Air, I need to go up Lozano's Road and go to Ofer Road. And to get on the freeway going either direction, to go to our local market, and I don't take Ofer Road into Auburn because it's such a bumpy, poorly maintained road, and I understand from the Department of Public Works that they're going, they have no intentions of maintaining it, they don't have the money. So I only take it coming from Auburn. It is already a dangerous road, it is already an adequate road, it is already a liability to come in and out of Lozano's Road, which is also used as a shortcut for many people and for parents taking their children to Ofer School. I myself personally, two years ago, was literally, per the CHP and the fire department, two feet away from having been killed in my convertible that was totaled by a car speeding on Ofer Road, and that was just a person working there. I think the traffic is despicable, and I dispute that this is the kind of industrial area that Ofer Road was meant for. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you.
Jack Jessen, and I live at 129 Geraldson Road. I'm approximately a quarter of a mile kitty-corner from this project. I live directly behind PNS and right at an angle to A&amp;A Steppingstone. Those businesses, and most of the businesses on that road, I can hear them all. I'm so close to them. But they all have a courtesy. They all try and start their businesses, even the PNS individuals, at around 7:00, sometimes 6:30, 7:00. They say they're going to have their trucks on the road at 5:30. That means they're going to have people there at 4:00. There's going to be so much noise, and that noise level is far and beyond any acceptable noise level. Saying that it's insignificant, I don't want to say it's an out-and-out lie, but it is incorrect. It is wrong. The noise level is beyond acceptable right now. But people are courteous. They're trying to, you know, allow us to have a quality of life. Livingston concrete, they'll destroy it. And it's not going to be just, you know, the 380 feet. That noise is going to go right down Geraldson, it's going to go right down Ofer, it's going to really cause a lot of problems. If nothing else, they should not be allowed to start that early. They can't. They're going to destroy the livelihood of, I mean, the quality of life of everybody around there. That is just horrible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners, applicant, and gallery. I'm Steve Benenga. I am representing American River Gas Company, and I met with Mr. O'Malley within the last week. He gave me a printed version of the PowerPoint. I listened. I neither endorsed, opposed, gave no opinion to the project, so I'm just here to set the record straight. Today, I received many phone calls from people regarding, there was a newspaper article that had our company in it as a proponent of it, so I'm setting the record straight here today. And I have, I've talked to another business owner that was in the PowerPoint mentioned, and he and I have both remained neutral during this whole time. And so, I'm just here to make sure that, that these people, I've been put in this kind of awkward situation where these people that patronize our business have been given information that may not be correct, and so, in, in today's newspaper, local newspaper. And so, with all, with all, with all due respect, American River Gas does not want to be brought into this to alienate neither our neighbors nor the applicant, and we just wish to be left out of the press releases and everything in the future. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. My name is Rick Johnson. I live on Geraldson Road, and I'm the current chairman of the Ofer Area Property Owners Association. You may have noticed as the day goes on, our crowd goes away. Unfortunately, some of my neighbors have to actually work for a living during the day in order to pay their mortgage and their Placer County property taxes. So I'd like to leave with you 360 signatures on a petition for the folks that couldn't be here today opposing this project. I would like to refer back to June of 2004, to the memorandum from your Environmental Health Department stating that this did not fall inside the general plan because their opinion of infrastructure was public water and public sewer. They also stated at the time that they felt the public water would be here by 2006. This is a letter which is also in your packet from the Placer County Water Agency, reiterating the earliest that they would have public water would be 2018, depending on the environment as far as economics in the area to be able to afford to do this. So we're not looking at a temporary situation where at least a minimum of eight years of 10,000 gallons a day. I'll hand these to you when I get done. Actually, we shouldn't be discussing the water. If you go back to Ofer's General Plan and Placer County's General Plan, because it plainly states, any heavy industrial complex should have public infrastructure before it's allowed to have a permit. I feel sorry for these folks. Someone led them astray early on, evidently. The Placer County Supervisors hired an independent contractor when I was a member of the MAC Committee to study Ofer Road and the existence of private sewer. It's already a problem on Ofer Road with the business, and they paid an outside source to study how to get it to a public sewer system because right now, those many businesses on septic in that area are creating a problem. The other item came up. We're zoned 2.3 and 4.6 because of wells in the area. We couldn't all live together. This water represents 40 houses on a 4.9 or five-acre parcel of land. You would never permit that in this county. The recycled water, I believe, is for washing only. I think structurally, they have to have fresh water. You can ask them to verify or clear that up for us. 5:30 noise, I think Jack covered pretty well of the neighborhood. The drainage ditches now run off of that property, down Geraldson Road, through a creek behind everyone's residence, and ultimately into the Auburn Ravine. So to say this doesn't affect the Auburn Ravine would be inappropriate or incorrect. The folks with, trying to save the salmon and the steelhead now can verify that for you. That's the current natural drain of water off of Ofer Road, down Geraldson, into the Auburn Ravine, underneath the new bridge on Lozano's, and out to, I guess, the Sacramento River ultimately. We would, I'll finish up, one more line. We, the citizens of Ofer, would request that you please do not certify this illegal EIR today. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
How do I do a little PowerPoint? We can't accept those at the meeting.
Oh, all right. My name's Dick Delapino. My wife and I live on Geraldson Road. I also own a small portion across from the project site that's also zoned C3, and I'm here for the record to say that I oppose this project for all the reasons that you've heard before. I'd also like to clarify that when I spoke with Mr. O'Malley, I think he's quite clear that I oppose it, so I'm not one of those nearby property owners that does approve the Staff mentioned earlier, and it struck me, that there are no similar business uses in the areas that are using sewer and water in this fashion. My question is, why is that? There must be a very good reason why this has not been done before. There's no enforcement, and there's nothing similar to what's being proposed. This is supposedly the first batch plant that's green. The only thing that I could see that's beyond the norm, I'm in construction, I work in concrete daily when there's work, is solar panels and drop-tolerant plants. Aside from that, everybody washes out and recycles their gravel and their water, and they use freshwater to batch concrete. There's very specific state specifications. Mr. O'Malley has used the term in the community that this is a boutique plant. What I wanted to show you on my, my PowerPoint is, on their website, they have four plants and photos of them. There's nothing boutique about mixing concrete, gentlemen. It's a down-and-dirty business that requires the infrastructure to do large quantities. The, the true goal here, if you really look between the lines, is this is a foot in the door. We're only going to do 300 cubic yards of material today. Tomorrow, we're going to come back and ask for an increase in what we can produce. One of their plants produces 1,200 cubic yards a day, one, 2,400, that was just updated to that capacity. So I don't know what's boutique and how long boutique is going to last, but I think it's, I think it's a fog bank. One thing that's not mentioned here either is, just up the street at the very corner of that photograph is a trailer home park, where there's, I don't know, 50, 60 families living there. Nothing's mentioned about way the wind blows and how it's going to affect them or across the street. I mean, the other business owners, for that matter, how are they going to keep their computers running when it's full of cement dust? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, or good afternoon, I guess, at this point. Brian Philippi, I live at 6835 Brooks Lane in the town of Loomis. I've got 36 years, or 35 years exactly, in, in the ready-mix and related fields, and very familiar with operations, ready-mix batch plants, and very familiar with the industry in general in Northern California. And I just want to come and make sure that my voice is heard, is supporting this project. And it's, it's done so for several, several reasons. And a lot of comments today about the water, you know, I'm not a geologist, and I certainly don't have experience in water issues, but my two and a half acres in Loomis has one and a half gallons a minute. Two lots over, it's almost artesian. They, they drill the well and the water comes down to the ground. So why is that? And that's within about 300 feet of my, my well. So, speaking directly to the water recycling issue in concrete, the industry recycles all the water it can today. There's reasons for that, it's because the state has regulations on the amount of water that leaves the property. So what, what the industry's done is they've developed systems to collect water and reuse it, and it's introduced into fresh concrete. And we do it. I have a ready-mix plant operation or a part of a ready-mix plant operation in Northern California, and we do that on a daily basis. So the water that is being generated, fresh water, there will be need for fresh water, but the need is to recycle as much water as possible. Just want to finish by saying that I know the Livingston's family personally. I've known them for about 15 years. They're an incredible, honest, and forthright family. I've seen their operations, and I would, if you haven't, I would encourage you to take a look at the operations that they currently have. And they're not a big industrial, messy-looking facility. They're clean, they're screened, they're paved, and when you drive by them, you say that's a nice-looking facility. So with that, I hope you consider all the evidence provided to you by your staff and all the expert evidence that's been provided. You, as Planning Commission, have a decision to make regarding what is right for this community, but you also have a decision to make about what is right for your own zoning and, and planning and general plan rules. This project fits all those rules. There's no reason. There's no reason, in my mind, that it should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathleen Percy. I'm pleased to be able to have the opportunity to talk to you today. I live at 10845 Ofer Road with my husband. Our daughter lives below us. My daughter and I both have asthma. We understand that the pollutants that are coming out of this plant are very deadly. I'm a respiratory therapist and have been for 40 years. You can't tell me that the powder that comes out of this plant is not going to affect us. We are directly east of the plant. My husband runs a small weather station there. This is the direction of the wind. It's going to blow up the hill to us directly from this plant. Please reconsider and do not approve this application. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm Betty Klopotic. I live at 100 Geraldson Road, very close to where the plant wants to go in. I have a well. I hope to maintain that well and not have it go dry. And I'm very close to that. And as far as A&amp;A stepping stones and the businesses on Ofer Road there, they've been there for many, many years. They didn't just come in. So I'm sure a lot of the restrictions were not there when they moved in. And as far as the well, where they want to put the CNET batch plant, I've lived in my house 45 years, raised my family there. That was always a beautiful, green place. We thought it was a wetlands. Come to find out, there was a broken water line there for many, many years. Then they did this marvelous 72-hour water test. Well, I would assume that a lot of that water was from the Placer Water Agency for the wetlands there and the broken water pipe for so many years. When you fixed the pipe, the beautiful green area went away, and so did the creek down behind a lot of the houses on Geraldson Road. So please give thought to those of us who live there, that we love our homes and we love our families, and we want to stay there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jim Rader, I live in Granite Bay, and I do too know the Livingston family. And I just wanted to say that I think there's a lot of misperceptions about batch planning. I think a lot of questions will be answered here in a few minutes, but I just want to say that, you know, there, Leah said it best, there is, there's no zone change here, there's no variance, there's no GP amendment. Property owners do have, do have rights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Burns. I live at 1300 Appaloosa, Auburn, California. I have, I'm not for or against this project. I became involved with this or just started looking at the project a few days ago. My background is in watershed management, and so I'm here for more looking at a technical aspect. I have not followed through and looked at the secondary reports from the water report or the soils reports that are coming out. But the comments I wanted to make regard the, you know, your adoption of the final EIR, and would propose that you wait on that until some further studies were made. And that is regarding, looking at the grading plan, I've noticed that they're proposing a 20-foot cut against the toe of the Interstate 80. And where their soil pits are, according to the reports, that less than three feet down, they start to get demodeled soils, which is a fluctuating groundwater table. And below that, they have, then it's saturated. So, you know, from a geological standpoint, it's very site-specific in this area. The hills to the south is a different geologic unit than what the proposed site is. The fluctuations in the water tables are tremendous in fractured groundwater areas, that there is a nexus between the pump test well and the monitoring well, which is adjacent, 70 feet off, that, you know, they suggest that there is only a one-foot downdraw in that monitoring well over three days, but the response time is only 30 minutes as soon as they started cutting off that water. So there is more of a nexus in terms of how the groundwater interacts in this area, how the groundwater from the upland area, which is on the south, which is a different geologic unit, affects this area, and what that water table will do when you cut 20 feet into the hill of where they want to put the, their septic system. That septic system, the data for that infiltration rate were based on native soils. They're going to be cutting 15 feet below that. So my comments is that I think further in geological or hydrologic investigation needs to occur to determine what is the infiltration rate when you're in solid granite, whether you have defractions or not. Those are my comments, is that I hope you further investigate whether or not, how those technical merits interact in, on this project. The groundwater, and this will be my last comment, is on the wells, the pump test shows that the water table at that well is only two feet below the surface. So at two feet at the bottom of wherever those wells originally were, down drawing 250 feet in the pump test affecting 70 feet away of one foot in 72 hours is significant and may impact being able to draw off 10,000 gallons a minute. It might not. It would depend, but I think further studies is warranted in how those all interact with their septic systems. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Name's Bob Allen. I live off of Geraldson. And let's talk money for a minute. At first glance, when I first looked at it, it looked like a pretty good idea for money for revenue to the county. My concern is, with me, I've had water trouble with the well, and so have my neighbors. And so what I see long-term is that property values are going to go down, and long-term it's going to be a net loss to the county, as over the years, all you'll have left is a few industrial plants, and people that live in the area will be forced to move out.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Pa Chao. I'm living at 185 Pangaview, Nant, right off of Ridge Road. At the end of last year, I heard the news from television, there's a city in East-South Bay Area, they have a cement plan. The people complained, wished that the plan be moved, but that plan was there before most of the citizen living there is 100 years old. So the people stuck. You want the plan moved? You move first, because we have been here first. I am suggesting of the panel members be very careful to make decisions, is right or wrong. Those people, the new resident or the grandson says, okay, what I can do, because the city was developed before, after the cement plan. If someday you guys approve this project, the Newcastle area became the city I mentioned it, all new resident or even our descendant, son, grandson, they say, how come Newcastle became it is today? You probably take a burden more heavier than rest of us. This is your dummy? Why you approved the guy, this plan, let's say 20, 30, or 50 years ago? So I just would suggest your panel members be very sincerely, very carefully, okay?
Thank you.
John Gilmore, Hillview Road, I spoke earlier. I'd like to bring up three comments specifically. Number one is in the conditions of approval permit. Item number four, it says permitted hours of operation for this use are 5:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. The planning director is authorized to waive timeframes based on special circumstances. I'd like you to strike that last sentence, please. I'd like something a little similar to the Planning Commission. It should come back before the public, so that we can have public comment and provide comment if necessary. The second, the second option I wanted to bring up was the water. I've heard conflicting reports, and I've never really gotten a concrete answer, literally. But the amount of water that goes into concrete, like the actual batch of concrete, so if you make a cubic yard of concrete, and I'd like Livingston to ask this, how many gallons of water actually goes into that yard? How many gallons? And then multiply that by 300, okay? That's about the average number of yard, or average number of gallons. Well, I did the math. I looked it up. It's between 45 and 90 gallons used to make that batch of concrete. Do the math. That's all I ask. Just do the math. Take a little pen, do the math. That's all I ask. The third thing I'd like to bring up is, I've already issued some recommended mitigation measures. They're in my, in my packet of comments. I don't know what page it's in your packet. In here, it specifically talks about, you know, the reducing the adverse noise impacts to the residents adjacent to the use of properties. You know, things like chipping, hammering, scraping should be prohibited at all times. Prior to 8 a.m., bucket loaders should be kept a minimum of four inches above ground. Bulk material transferred between bins or transferred trucks shall be prohibited. In other words, you know, you shouldn't be able to take a loader and dump it into the back of a truck. Those simple things. And again, just please take a look at this, this is, these are very simple comments. These are things that we found on other batch plants in the county, that these are comments like Manuel Brothers was a great example. You guys have heard Manuel Brothers here a few years ago. This is a great example of comments and mitigation measures that they can, they can easily implement, and that you can, you can ask them to include in their conditional use permit if you approve it. And again, I don't recommend you approve the conditional use permit. Have them go back, have them readdress the noise issues, have them readdress the well issues, like we've all asked. And again, this is from the very beginning of this project, we've asked them to do this. So please, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody in the queue, and so I'll close the public comment.
I have about 30 seconds left.
All right, well, just a minute. Say, just a minute, I just closed the public comment, ma'am. I just closed the public comment.
Commissioner Johnson, is there, is there an opportunity for any response to the comments today from?
Yeah, yeah, I was just going to give you an opportunity.
Yes, no, my 30 seconds left tonight.
Okay. Okay, well, I guess you're on now. James?
Thank you. Thank you very much, James O'Malley. As each person came up, I wrote down their name, not their last name, because I can barely write that quickly, but the majority of the comments, if you don't mind if I generalize, is about the well and the well water. And I think the best thing to do is to give you all in this room, and some people in this room, a second or third chance at learning about well waters, well, the science of it, and the capacity of this particular well. It's actually, in overall use, 10,000 gallons per day on a maximum day is quite low. I remember months ago, last summer, there was a lady that came to me, goes, you know, I just wish this would stay a buffer. And I go, well, it isn't going to be that way, but what would you suggest if it were a buffer? She goes, ah, orchards or a vineyard, something romantic like that. So I turned to Dave and Sean Munger, who I'm going to ask to come up and give an explanation of this well and its capacity and the safety. By the way, I don't think anybody has more to lose, because financials were discussed up here, than this applicant. You know, why would they want to move forward on an operation that's going to invest hundreds of thousands of dollars, which, you know, reaching that point right now, and not have it in play and have it feasible for a business practice, as much less buy the land? But when this city, when I returned to her, I go, well, what would the water capacity be used on a daily basis for that kind of agricultural use? And, you know, I don't want to be the expert up here, because there's more in the crowd, but that's about, an agriculture use would be about four times that amount. Four times the amount. So if you're opposed to concrete manufacturing, that's one thing, but to use this well and the capacity of this well, and what we're conditioned to use out of it, which is about a third of a 72-hour capacity, isn't really the right direction to go. So what I'd like to do is introduce Dave Fulton from Diamond Well, Scott Humphries to talk about dust, Diane, again, if there's any, you know, legal requirements and so forth, and maybe some objective comments about it, because, you know, I've heard terms like an illegal document and things of that nature, and some really, you know, off-the-wall comments. We totally support staff's involvement. Every rock's been turned over, over and over and over again. Questions get asked one time, then they get asked a different way another time. At some point in time, you know, we just, thank goodness, there's a time limit on, or statute on comments and public comments. So I think it would really assist the decision-makers here to have Dave come up, Sean Munger as well, our quote hydrologists. These guys are expert in the field, and they can clearly give a kind of a, well, for me, it was a grade school education on the well on this property, and give you guys all the comfort level that this is a strong well. It provides plenty of capacity. Ironically, the Placer County Water Agency requires development to put improvements in. In this case, they use fees and future fees and future development to advance infrastructure. So if you oppose development, you're really trying to put a slowdown or a mark on future improvement. So that is kind of an irony in itself. So if you'd come up, Dave, and maybe Sean too, and talk about this well and its capacity, and some of the measures that we're applying here.
Hello, my name's Dave Fulton. I'm the managing general partner of Diamond Well Drilling Company, and have been for the last 30 years. I've drilled probably in excess of 10,000 wells in the, in the Placer Eldorado, Nevada area. And I'd like to just, I don't do laser much, but so I'm going to go right up here to the screen. I lived in, okay, I lived right here between 1983 and 1988, in the Fay House. I drilled a well there. I've drilled, I've drilled virtually every well on the, on the south side of Ofer Road there. And I used the well at 10240 Ofer Road for five years. I had five rigs at the time, I had 35 employees. We used between 10,000 and 12,000 gallons of water a day. I mentioned that as a response to Mr. Gray's question, if anybody else had operated in that fashion in this area. I don't know how much PNS uses or Keith Ariano uses on his, Keith Ariano now owns the house that I used to live in. Just as an anecdote for that, it's kind of interesting to me that everybody wants to be hooked up to, to public infrastructure. In fact, when I first moved there into Perry Queen's property across the road, I got permission from Ray Vega, the chief of the fire department, to use the fire hydrant in order to fill my trucks every day. And after a couple of months, I heard around town that every morning between 7:00 and 8:00 o'clock, nobody could take a shower, because there was no, no pressure in the, in the line. And we, Ray and I finally traced it back to our use of the fire hydrant. We drilled a well at 10240 Ofer Road. We pumped 12,000 gallons a day for five years, virtually every, every day during the summer, sometimes six days a week. I'm not aware of any, any impact that that had on any of the other wells in the area. Yeah?
I have a question, because I have agricultural property in Lincoln, and I actually have a couple different wells, and I have residents right around me. You've been talking about fractured granite, and I'm assuming that's what the strata is where you're drilling wells? And, correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a difference between drilling in fractured strata than, say, if you were down lower in the valley where you've got basically a big pool underneath? Because you can be in one area, 100 feet away from somebody that's 300 feet pumping, you know, 60 gallons a minute, and that person that's 60 feet away can be pumping a gallon and a half, and really, the water doesn't have anything to do with each other. Is that correct?
That's correct. I would, I would say in the valley, you're, you're looking at a sort of a cereal bowl or maybe a snow cone, and you stick your straw in the snow cone, and you know when you, you suck on a snow cone, the syrup goes away, and there's a little circle around where the straw was. That's sort of the way the hydrology works in the valley. Up here, it can work. Up here, it can work like that, if the rock's fractured enough. In some cases, now, for instance, if you just go right down Ofer, excuse me, Geraldson, if you get about 300 yards down Geraldson, the formation changes, it's much tighter, the wells aren't as good. But in this corridor, right here, right along Ofer Road, the aquifer's really quite fractured, and there is quite a bit of communication. That being said, we actually monitored the American River well during the pump test, and we only got eight inches of drawdown in 72 hours, after getting 247 feet of drawdown in the pumping well, 70 feet away. So I think that that's really indicative of the type of impact that the pumping of this well's gonna have on neighboring wells. It's just not there.
Okay, thank you.
Let me ask another question. I don't know if it's related or not, there was a comment about the high water table where this parcel's at?
That's, well, the fact that was cited was that the water table is two feet below the surface, that's inaccurate. The water level varies in this area. The static water level in wells in this area is between 20 feet and 23 feet.
Okay, on this particular property?
On this particular property, it's 22 feet.
Okay, thank you.
There was one other, actually, that was one of the things I wanted to address. The other was the mention of wells within 375 feet. That's within 375 feet of the Livingston well, not of the property line. There's one well. And, let's see, oh, Mr. Delpino mentioned that there had been no operations that had relied on, I guess, septic and wells in this area before, and that would certainly be a surprise to me. I certainly relied on them when I had my property at 10240 Ofer Road. And I think, that's all I've got, if there are any more questions.
Okay. You said your property, now that was industrial property? You had an industrial use there?
I had an industrial use at 10240, yeah. And it's the big Victorian, you probably have noticed it on the freeway.
And you said, how much water did you use a day?
We used between 10,000 and 12,000 gallons a day. We'd fill up five trucks with 2,000 gallons a truck, and then we used excess water on top of that to wash the trucks and the rigs and that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you.
That was 20 years ago. And, well, there's 10,000 gallons of water that's not being used.
Okay. Let me see, James, you had another person?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Sean Munger, the hydrologist that was responsible on this project.
Good afternoon, Sean Munger, NGO, Rockland. I believe all the commissioners have read the Parker groundwater peer review and our response to that, so I probably should touch on just a couple items there, but one clarification I wanted to make, there's a reference to this 375-foot radius of influencer. Basically, what we should describe that as is theoretically, because that's based on a mathematical calculation, the distance at which there'd be some measurable drawdown in a neighboring well, provided they're intersecting the same water-bearing zones. And that was based on one-tenth of a foot. So if you look at it from a utility standpoint of a well, a tenth of a foot is a negligible drawdown. They're usually, you know, measured in tens or hundreds of feet of drawdown that's available, although most of these wells are relatively shallow in the area. So that 375 is not some magic number that which wells within that radius would be adversely affected, and I think that's exemplified by the fact that American Propane's well is just 70 feet away, and we saw no appreciable drawdown at four to five times the discharge rate that this facility will operate at. I think that's very significant if this, if we actually looked at this running at that 5 to 7 GPM, it's probably unlikely we'd see any drawdown or any appreciable drawdown at all in that American River well. And just, again, to strengthen this idea of the differences in hydrogeology between here and the valley, these types of environments are very difficult. They're very compartmentalized. The water-bearing zones are a function of what we refer to as secondary porosity. It's not the pore space in a gravel or sand formation, it's actually the fractures in the granitic bedrock itself. And as you can imagine, some of those are connected, some of those are not. You end up with some zones that are highly water-bearing. We had several people testify to one well being dry and just several hundred feet away, having wells that were artesian. This is not uncommon at all. So both the vertical and lateral conductivity in these kind of bedrock aquifers is difficult to model, and really, it's, you literally can have a situation like that, one well several hundred feet away, depending on its depth and where it's drawing water from, can be dry while another can produce great volumes of water. I don't know if there's other questions, I think...
I guess I wanted to, I think I heard you talk about one-tenth of a foot?
Yes.
And I also heard eight inches. Are those the results of that test?
No, the test itself, the 72-hour pump test, was, yeah, about eight inches after 72 hours at roughly 26 gallons per minute.
Okay, and so what was a tenth of a foot?
A tenth of a foot is, what we did is, we took the results of Diamond Weldering's test, and we applied a mathematical equation to that to determine what this radius of influence would be at the actual facility's pumping rate of approximately 5 to 7 GPM. That developed this 375-foot radius where you'd have a drawdown of a tenth of a foot or just over an inch.
Okay. Let me see, can you, you know, I don't know if we really got, there was a question earlier that was trying to compare, oh, domestic or agricultural uses to the amount of water that's projected to be used by this well. Do you have any information on that?
I don't have specifics. Obviously, that greatly depends on the crop type, and certainly, if you look at it from a water balance standpoint, some of that water is recharged, there's evapotranspiration, so there's, it's a more dynamic process when you're applying agricultural water. But needless to say, something like a vineyard would easily use, depending on the amount of acres that was developed, as much or more water than is proposed here. The residential question is all over the board. I know I have a lot of lawn, I'm certainly not gonna fall into that typical 300 to 400, you know, gallon-type estimate, so that really would depend on the lot sizes, the amount of irrigated land they have, do they have swimming pools, all that type of thing. But it's suffice it to say that other land uses that would be allowed within this zoning could easily use as much or more water than what Livingston's proposing.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think two more items, Chairman, that were brought up, and I'll take care of noise since it's simple. The bottom line is the EIR after the studies and all the analysis is there's no mitigation required, that this property falls within the noise levels promoted or created by I-80. And if you read the report, they use the term "it's washed," meaning the noise levels off of I-80 as they exceed or fall away from I-80. This property falls within the, well, two-thirds of it, right where it says R and O, is within 70 dBs, meaning if you stand there, the noise from the freeway is creating 70 decibels of noise, and then there's another buffer outside of our project area, which is at a 65 dB. So we're within the standards. So what the report said, mitigation, no mitigation required because of the impacts of the I-80. So that pretty much handles the noise.
Well, if I-80 didn't exist, and you just looked at the noise that's gonna be produced by this plant, and given the standards, what would it be?
Yeah, it's a good question. I think Leah might know, yeah.
Leslie should know.
I'll need a minute to just...
As stated in the draft EIR on page 7-11, it would generate a noise level of approximately 75 decibels at 100 feet from the noise source.
And what's the standard?
For heavy commercial, 75 dB is acceptable, or, I'm sorry, I think that goes for traffic noise.
So we're within the standard?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll be within the standard.
Okay.
You're not suggesting closing I-80, I hope, today?
Oh, no, I just, there was a comment that you were going to, your plant was going to exceed the standard, and I just wanted to...
No, no. I think another item that needs some clarification, some objective input, is air and air quality. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Humphries to speak on that matter too, please.
My name's Scott Humphrey. I'm a GreenStar auditor for the National Ready Mix Concrete Association. GreenStar was actually put together a couple years ago by the federal EPA and the Ready Mix Association. I would like to also confirm that as presented today, this plant is a sustainability plant on a national level. The use of water can actually be used non-potable as per ESTM C94, which is also in compliance with Caltrans. The dusting is such, is picked up at all the transfer points, which is a standard requirement. This plant actually exceeds the South Coast Air Quality down in Los Angeles, which has some of the highest standard regulations for the country. All these points are picked up, and what is collected is actually put back into the fresh concrete process. So there is no discharge or remittance of the dusting, it's put back into fresh concrete and resold as a finished product. Other than that, that's all I have to confirm. Also want to confirm too, or at least clarify, some information that a concrete mix design only takes about 30 gallons of water, excluding what the moisture is inside the sand. So to be confirmed, it's about 25 gallons per cubic yard of concrete in producing fresh concrete going out the gate. Thank you.
Okay. I have a question, because in past, I guess it was when we reviewed the draft, there was some discussion that this could be putting up like five sacks of concrete dust a day, and that would be within the standard? Is that what we're proposing here, or is that what the standard is that we're measuring?
No, I would politely have a difference of opinion on that. Our efficiency of our dust collection as best practices in the industry is 99.7% efficient, which is the filtration systems. So assuming all the cartridges and everything is in place on the plant, there's very little of that material being emitted. The five sacks, I think that's referenced, on average, that's how much we collect into our vacuum systems for the filtration. So it's not being emitted to the atmosphere, it's actually being collected into the hoppers and then put back into the cycle of producing concrete.
And so, now, I guess the bottom-line question, and maybe there's not an answer to that, is, is there gonna be dust leaving the property with this plant, concrete dust?
Remaining in compliance, the answer would be no. It's, the dust collection is all pretty much done by a visual audit and how we go through the plants. So I don't care what size dust collection you have, you could have the largest in the whole world, if there's any dusting, then you're out of compliance. And that's a visual audit that we do down in Southern California with South Coast Air Quality. I would also like to confirm too, that as was presented today, all these plants Livingston own and operate today do meet the GreenStar certification. And again, this was a program put together a couple years ago, which was a requirement by the federal EPA and the compliance working with the industry.
And this is an industry standard, or...
Yes, it is. GreenStar was created to bring the level and consistency of all ready-mixed concretes nationally to an environmentally friendly impact. As some of the conversations were brought up today, some of us struggled with that, and the certification, which is on auditor number 58 nationally, to go from site to site, and it's a very comprehensive formal presentation with follow-up program and standards for the ready-mix producer to stay in compliance.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Just my last comment, Chairman Johnson, if there's any question or concern about the process or the document or the legal analysis as prepared by county council, we would look for them to respond to that. And then, one last concern I have, we are serious about making a sustainable facility, and we didn't retain Shonda Kraut for any apparent reason, except to do just that. So if anybody wants to learn more about that, because it is a new design, it is a new science, it is a new process, I think it's just gonna be here for good, so you might as well get a jump on that train and be a part of that, and it's making this more interesting, and I think more sustainable, and a better complement to the community. So thank you very much.
Well, let me, I may have one more area that I'll give you a chance to respond to, if I could. Appreciate your closing comments, but there was quite a bit of discussion about the trucks and the diesel and the pollution from the trucks. Now, I think that was probably, you know, county feels that was adequately addressed in the EIS, but it seemed like there's kind of an uncertainty about how many trucks...
We have an expert to respond to that as well.
Okay.
Chairman?
My name's Brian Yates. I am a consultant with NGO out of Rockland. For the last number of years, I've been working in a variety of fields, including stormwater, stormwater management. My role with Livingston's and all their facilities is keeping them compliant with current state, federal, and local stormwater pollution runoff regulations. What I can speak to here is there are two components that this particular facility will have to comply with. The first will be the construction runoff requirements, and a facility like this, this would fall under the statewide NPDS program, the general permit, as it's commonly referred to, there's a new one that's implemented recently. And as stated in the environmental impact report, the site will be compliant with that program, will be permitted under that program. The second will be the statewide general industrial permit. Their standard industrial code falls within, the guidelines for coverage under this permit, all their other facilities currently have coverage under this permit, and they are compliant under this permit. So, under both programs, they incorporate, they utilize a variety of best management practices. Under the construction, it's a combination of erosion and sediment control to reduce or eliminate impacted stormwater from leaving the site. As far as industrial practices concerned, all industrial process water on Livingston's facilities across the board is collected and reused in their process. The only water that leaves their site, the only water that leaves any of their sites is water that falls out of the sky. At that, I'd kind of open it up.
Okay. Well, the question was, the trucks running up and down the road and spewing...
I understand, I was asked to jump up and speak to stormwater briefly.
Well, I was gonna maybe, sorry, ask you, on the trucks, because of the EPA requirement, DOT requirements and stuff, the emission standards and stuff are changing in California, and I'm assuming that Livingston's gonna have to meet all those standards on any of their equipment, whether it's a loader or whatever. It's not gonna be a 30-year-old truck running down the road spewing black smoke.
Okay. I will let somebody else speak to the emissions specifically. I was just, I was asked to come up and...
Mr. Chair, regarding the air pollution from the diesel vehicles associated with the proposed project, those are regulated through state and federal standards. You may have heard recently that the federal standards are proposed to be increased to make vehicles more compliant. And so while the Air Pollution Control District for Placer County measures the stationary pollution sources at the site, the vehicles are controlled and measured through the Environmental Protection Agency and state and federal standards.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, is that it?
I have one other quick question. James, maybe you can, you can help me. One of the issues that came up earlier that I'm familiar with, and that is the maintenance of the equipment, and is that gonna be done in a shop facility per se? I know one of the things that I'm familiar with is cleaning drums and that sort of thing.
I have AAA, you take over.
Ted Henley in Livingston's operations. We have a main facility on Roseville Road in North Highlands where our shop work is taken care of. The only kind of maintenance-type work that would be done there is tire checking. Car service, Leswab would come in, maybe check tire pressures and stuff like that.
But you're not doing any maintenance on this site, then?
No, there's no shop there. There's a warehouse there for storing goods out of the weather.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay. James, that's it for you, and so I'll close that part of the hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Well, I guess if there's no discussion, I would move that we certify the final EIR Well, I guess if there's no discussion, I would move that we certify the final EIR prepared for the project, and then also approve the statements of findings for the EIR that are included in our staff report attachment D, and also approve the conditional use permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any additional comment?
Roll call.
Okay, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, could we have a roll call vote?
Mr. Denial?
Yes.
And Mr. Severson?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Crabbe?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes. Okay, well, that concludes our hearing. Let me see, before everybody leaves, I need to inform you that you have an opportunity to appeal the decisions just made. They need to be filed with the planning department within 10 calendar days, and the appeal fee will be $495. Thank you.